...months ago. So, the committee, the budget committee passed the budget.
Yeah, they made a change.
Predicated on the cuts. If you want to talk about the technical issues of how we make that work, if we can separate that, and I'll take a quick look to the budget share, see if we can do that, but we cannot do it in a way that jeopardizes the funding element of it. That must remain at a 50% reduction. That must remain, or you create a new budget hole. And you can't do that. We can't afford these kind of things anymore. It's impossible. And so, once upon a time, we could say, "Refer it back to committee. We'll not worry about the problem of $2.5 million. We'll do it in the reserve fund. We'll do it here. We'll move it in." There is no money to move. We're talking about running out of cash in a few months. In just a few months, we run out of cash. So, folks, be careful what you do today. We must fix this problem in the budget. If you want to tinker with the other issues, remove those elements out of this ordinance today then, and we'll come back and talk about that separately. But we must do the budget today. We must pass an ordinance today, reducing the money at least.
Calling on Assistant City Attorney Pete Echeverria. District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas asks what the procedure for conducting special events will be, and how will council offices be involved?
When it comes to this particular procedure, the way it's written right now, and say somebody wanted to have a special event in which the city would pick up some of the costs, what's that procedure today? They would talk to a council member, they would talk to the department. How would that work?
I believe, excuse me, I believe that the way the procedure works now is the council member introduces the motion, so they approach the council office right now.
No, 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 no. We're not talking about today. I'm talking about what we're talking about here, the new language, starting July 1st.
The ordinance, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I mean, I like what you said. I would prefer to just keep it like that, but we're not, so...
The ordinance would require that the application be filed with the Street Services Bureau.
Okay.
And that would include if the applicant wanted a waiver of, or a subsidy of the fees, of the cost, up to 50%, then they would include a request for that subsidy at the time that they file the application. If the application is approved, and the event qualifies as a non-commercial, and the entity is a nonprofit entity, then they would qualify for the subsidy automatically.
Okay, so, the department would be receiving the request directly?
Yes.
And the department would be communicating, technically speaking, only with the constituent or the party that is actually requesting that up-to-50% fee waiver?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, and there are two exceptions, and that's the block parties and farmers' markets will get 100% subsidy.
Okay. And then, on top of that, is there any reason why the procedure rolling forward come July 1st, and this ordinance does not include involvement of the council offices?
Well, it actually, it does include involvement of the council offices, in that it requires that the bureau notify the council offices, as well as all the other offices and departments that are affected by the event, notify them immediately of the receipt of the application and seek their input. In terms of whether the event impacts the community adversely, how that adverse impact should be addressed, whether there'd be conditions on the permit itself, or if the conditions are not accepted, whether the permit should be denied.
Other council members also took the opportunity to give their opinions on the subject.
I don't want to stop a freight train that's been going up the hill for six years, but at the same time, I don't want to lose our ability to celebrate the city in a way. And from reading the ordinance, it takes it right out of our hands in a way, Gary, because you may not have a complete understanding, you have a complete understanding of the municipal code, complete understanding of a multitude of the challenges that face the city, but when a group comes, I think there maybe needs to have some involvement with the Department of Neighborhoods, and also, the things I would want to say, members, do we look at this instead of an even 15-split? Do we split it by the seven regions of the city? Because some neighborhoods have more activity or another. Does anyone have a report on what has gone on in the past? Because I haven't seen it, if there is. Anybody have that? Anyone has that? So, we're all going on assumptions here. We don't know that there's been 425 block parties.
I'm sorry, I believe the CLA did report that...
Well, I see Mr. Miller over there. Is there a report? Yeah, I don't know if I'll call you to the table, Jerry, but is there a report that says there's 427 block parties, 29 movie prebeers? Where's that report? I just need that report. Because I think it needs a little more review on this, because you're not going to even implement this thing to when?
Thirty days after it's approved by council.
No, you got to publish it. You're ready to go 30 days in August or in September?
Well, we'll be ready to go as soon as council approves the personnel that's associated with the program. There are five positions that are associated with the one-stop permitting process, and so we have hope that those will be also approved at the same time, so that we can move forth immediately.
That's already approved in the budget? It's already approved by the Personnel Committee, by Mr. Zein? Those positions, five hires for these positions?
Yeah, those positions were in the budget, yes.
I know, but are those people there? If we're going to make people do this, they're not there. Are they there?
They are not there yet, so...
Not there yet? Now, does the hiring freeze? How are we going to do it? So, these are some questions that I have. I think we just need a little more time to get up to the top of the mountain.
District 8 Councilmember Bernard Parks gives dollar figures on the past cost of waivers, and contends that council offices will have input into special events that occur in their districts.
This started, I think, when Ron Deaton was here, and we thought we had it resolved several other times. We know that, and although we can dispute the figures, there's estimates of somewhere four to five million plus was involved with waivers. The issue here, we've already gone through a process that's been at least three or four years since I've been on the Budget Finance to get to this point. The budget includes this savings based on this process. It sets up the two funds. If we send it back to committee, we in effect have no process unless we go back to waivers. Mr. Alacon's motion certainly gives clarity as to the current situation as it relates to staff being available, but we have to also make clear that, starting July 1st, the subsidies are in play if we approve this. So, we have no other option except to move forward, work out the details, and I would, as suggested before, it's going to require individual office staffs to be more proactive in working with street services to get the projects or the events that you know that come up annually before their review, so that they can get the consideration that's needed. And it's up to you to set up the criteria as to how your money is spent, so you do have a lot to say, but once you establish the fund for that month, or for the year, you cannot individually pick and choose an event over another event. And so, it gives us the best of, I think, all worlds, that we have input, we have the ability to set a structure, we have our staffs involved, and again, in the final analysis, we don't have any options if we don't pass it, because there's no other system to deal with special events come July 1st.
Other council members also took the opportunity to give their opinion on the topic.
I would like to, to the extent possible, also have a level of discretion of how these funds are used, and who is on the street and who isn't, and that's where I'd like to be. So, could anyone here at the table tell me what gets us there?
Well, I think Mr. Echeverria needs to address that. I can tell you that one of the things we've been doing over the last eight years is to try to address that very issue, is to try and give all of you as much discretion as possible, without running afoul of equal protection and legal issues. Now, the ordinance that is before you requires that anybody who is putting on a special event demonstrate that they have consulted with the council office before they come in and get a permit. Now, I recognize consultation and approval are two different things. I recognize that. But the ordinance does require, and I'm sure Ms. Carter can show you exactly where, it requires that anybody who submits an application to street services for a permit demonstrate that they have consulted with the council office.
Okay, so, I want to make sure I understand. Well, I want to reaffirm the need to address the fiscal issue, so I don't want to pretend that's not happening, so... Can we split this up? Can we divide this? And does item 9B do that? Or does this, it gives us time?
Well, 9B essentially makes it clear that the current process is in place until...
He's all my time.
Until the end of July, to give time for street services to set up the mechanisms to start processing the permits.
So, if we go with 9B, we adhere to the fiscal discipline we need to have, which has been highly recommended by our colleagues who sit on Budget and Finance, and just give us one more shot at trying to look at the discretion issue, 9B, for that one-month period?
Well, I think, as I indicated, in essence, 9B, as a matter of practice, we're going to be doing anyway, because the mechanism is not in place. So, the motions waiving fees for events occurring prior to July 1st are going to continue to get processed. The idea would be that after August 1st, then street services would be handling the application. So, that's really all that 9B does.
That's right.
If, you know...
But it doesn't get through the concern of the loss of discretion?
No, no, it does not.
Declaring the Street Services Department does a good job. District 7 Councilmember Richard Alacon suspects that putting the responsibility of special events in their hands is probably not a good idea, and brings up the concept of first come, first served.
So, members, if you want, street services, you know, the good people who do, I think, a good job to make all the decisions about events in your district, I think that's a very dangerous way to handle this. I do not want to see, to be extreme, the Ku Klux Klan, other, you know, terrorist groups coming into our streets because they were first in line. I mean, that is not the way, that is not why we got elected. We got elected to make decisions, and we're held accountable to those decisions. If they don't like the events that I approve in my district, then unelect me. You know, that is their choice. But to say that we have to do it by whoever comes first in line, and any organization out there can have an event in your district with city money, if you don't think your voters are going to have a bigger concern about some of those events than the issues as presented. I think the bottom line is, we did not figure out an alternative way to provide the council members with control of events, to allow them to choose events that the city would participate in or not, without having to allocate direct funding. I think there's a way to do it, and I would reiterate, that the way to do that would be to say that the event is, it's not a special event to the extent that any organization out there can do an event without working with the city, but that they would have to work with the council office. And if they're working with the council office, then it's merely a city event, and we don't have the civil rights issues, I believe. But since we haven't had that analysis, I think it should go back to committee to make that determination, and I believe we can avoid this problem.
Making it clear she does not want to touch the money or budget. District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn expresses her concerns as to how the money for special events will be distributed, and is concerned that council districts will have no discretion as to who's able to get city funding for special events.
What we're trying to do, more with less, or we're trying to do the same with less. All I'm concerned about is how do we take that 1.5 million and find a way to budget that, so that we can make sure that events that have gone on in our district will continue to be able to be funded 50%. We know, everybody, except for block parties, are going to have to contribute 50%. I think we're going to find a lot of organizations in our communities, particularly now, nonprofit groups, that are going to find this to be prohibitive, and are going to have a very difficult time coming up with that. And so, the idea of celebrations, the idea of people feeling good about living in Los Angeles, the ideas about trying to put on a little event, are going to be very burdensome. But I'm letting that go, because I feel like the will of this body is to have this policy. All I'm saying is, that last $100,000 that each of us are going to be paying the other 50%, I'm trying to find a way that we can budget that in our offices, so that events that we know take place from January to December, the best of our ability, we're going to try to help them get that 50%. This policy does not address that. This policy said, this ordinance says, anybody can apply to street services to be this half-funded, and according to the city attorney, they have to fund them. So, January through September, that might be all of your $100,000, folks. And so, all your events around Thanksgiving, all your events around the holidays, will not have that money. I just want everybody to understand that. Because according to the city attorney, street services has to say yes, and they have to give the 50% fund. You're shaking your head, "No," but that's what the city attorney has just said. Is that correct?
Correct.
Say that a little bit louder.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have before us, colleagues, a series of motions. Listen up, everybody, we got a series of motions. The last one to be made was Mr. Alacon's motion, which we will take up first, since we go in reverse order per council rules. We will, that motion, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to state what that does.
The last motion...
I'd like to, I mean, please do.
By Mr. Alacon, seconded by Ms. Hahn, was to, one, approve 9B, and to, two, send the entire matter, or send the rest of the matter back to committee.
That, that's what was stated, that's what we have before us, if there's any... Okay. Everybody clear with that? Please?
Which, Mr. President, City Attorney reminded me, which does include sending the ordinance back to committee as well.
The ordinance would go back to committee as well, folks. It was the whole enchilada. Salsa verde included. All right. Please open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine irons, two noes.
Again, the proposed ordinance was sent back to committee for further refinement. The dollar amount will not change, and thus, no changes to the city's budget will be necessary. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend in June 19th, 2009. On behalf of Chris Cowan and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
I got you something very special for our first anniversary. Now, close your eyes. Surprise! It's an emergency preparedness kit. Isn't it great? It's got food, water, first aid kit, and this neat emergency tool for shutting off utilities. Honey, we are going to be prepared for any emergency. Honey? Sweetie? I have one more surprise. This really cool cranking flashlight. Get the message? Be prepared. I'll be home in a minute.
Well, the party's just getting started, so hurry home, honey.
Talk to her.
Yes, good job.
Slow down. Your family is waiting for you. Watch the road.
G'day. Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Mr. Rayes, Ms. Hunt, good morning. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Westen, and Ralph. Waiting for those members to arrive, thank you. Again, we'll begin council session approximately ten minutes. Again, we'll begin council session approximately ten minutes.
Good afternoon and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand nine, and this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. For those of you who are new, the council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at ten a.m., and the meetings are always open to the public. For those who cannot make it to the City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel thirty-five or can be viewed by visiting our website. Mr. Clerk, the meeting is now in session. Would you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, very good. What is our first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Zine moves. Councilmember Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Weezer moves. Councilmember Alarcon seconds.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and there would be the flag salute.
All right, why don't we ask Mr. Labange if he would rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All rise, please.
I think I'll ask everyone, please rise, especially our great children of Los Angeles who are joining us today. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
And let's hear it for the children of Los Angeles here on this stage.
Thank you very much, and then thank you to all the young people who are here in the council chamber today. Mr. Clerk, our next item of business?
Madam President, would you like to go through the agenda?
Yes, let's do that first.
The first item on the agenda is an ordinance notice for public hearing. Council should have twelve members. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes. Next item?
Item two is a street vacation item in Council District Fourteen. Notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and instruct the city engineer to proceed.
All right, without objection?
Items three through eighteen are items to which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials? Mr. Labange?
On behalf of Councilmember Bernard Parks, seven, eight, and nine special.
All right, thank you very much. Any other specials, members? So would you, without objection, open the roll on the rest?
Madam President, on item five, the committee report was submitted without recommendation, and I believe there's amendment that's going to be in the works as well. Do you wish to hold that?
Let's hold, yes, let's hold that one on the desk. And ask for the rest. Open the roll on that.
Madam President, I'm sorry, items three and four are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those as well?
Yes. So there's nothing additional left. Let's go on to the next section.
Madam President, you need to take a vote on those items.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Items nineteen through thirty-three are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Members, are there any specials on those? Anyone want to call in?
Six.
Twenty-six is to be called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Ms. Hahn?
Twenty-four and twenty-seven.
Any other specials? That's twenty-four and twenty-seven. All right, if we can open the roll on the rest?
Madam President, you do have cards on twenty-eight and twenty-nine as well.
Okay, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, hold special for cards. Any other specials then? All right, open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, items thirty-four through forty are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, members, again, any specials? Mr. Labange?
Go for it, Mr. Bernard Parks. Special thirty-eight, special forty.
All right. Any other specials?
And forty out of order if possible, requested by Mr. Parks.
All right, Mr. Zine, do you have any specials?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, called special by Mr. Zine.
And Madam President, there are cards on thirty-five and thirty-six.
All right, called special on thirty-five, thirty-six. And for the remaining items, since there are no other specials being called, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, item forty-one is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Madam President, there are now twelve members. Do you wish to take up the ordinances that were being held?
Yes.
The items one, three, and four.
All right, are there any members wishing to speak on any of those items? If not, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
That would conclude the items called special. Do you wish to go back to public comment?
Yes. And our first speaker will be Mr. Sky Anderson, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams.
I'm Sky Anderson, a resident of Hollywood. I want to thank these beautiful children for being here today. When they were saying to pledge allegiance to the United States, I cried. I don't think any more beautiful means innocent children committing themselves to serve this country. It's just magnificently beautiful. I want to talk about Villagoso, the mayor. I've criticized him, but I've changed my mind. We have one of the greatest police departments in the United States because of him. He supports it, and I checked in downstairs and told the lady, "Check me in, you have a great police department." She says, "Yes, we do." And it wasn't always that way, and because of him, children can probably grow up a lot safer than they could before he was the mayor. Also, the transit system. I ride the bus, and the bus is so much better than it used to be, and this is one of Mrs. Villagoso's priorities. I want to talk about the city council in Hollywood. Mr. Labange took courage to save the Griffith Park from damage, and he took the courage to save the reputation in the view of Capitol Record Building. Hollywood is booming. I was at the Amiga Record thing last night, and a guy named Costello was there. Young people from all over the city were there. But mainly, I want to talk about the state's capital. These Republican politicians, not the Republicans in office, but they demanded that the politicians sign a pledge to not raise taxes. It's the opinion of many people that the wealthy could be charged one percent more in wealth, and that would solve the budget crisis. Because of that, these cruel Republican members, we're going to have children who are going to be dying. Healthcare is going to be deprived, and we're going to have mothers on the street with their children. I have one message to the Republican Party, you're dooming yourself in future election. You are cruel, you are cruel to our children, and that's the message people are going to get when you run for real of office. Do you want that reputation? Are you cruel to children? Just watch what happens, sir. You are cruel to children, and GOP is.
Dr. Williams. And following Dr. Williams will be Noel Weiss.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five Berrua Road, El Cerrino, Northeast L.A. Dioptré National Center. Next week, they will be, sorry, the Board of Referred Powers will be considering various elements. The lease agreement. What sort of example do you present to these schoolchildren here in chambers when the city of L.A., Recreation and Parks Department, and the commission, have not enforced the lease conditions and terms for over twenty years? No drawings of the existing building or the original building, and all the modifications there too. How about the records? No records of financial transactions, IRS forms. What happens? Now, the lease that's going to be considered next week doesn't say anything about that. It just goes on and says, okay, we will approve these things. It doesn't say that the lease is in default for twenty years, no payments, no records, no drawings. This is going to be piecemeal. First, they'll approve the, quote, "new lease," then it will be modified by the commission because then the conflict of interest may be resolved. So we're looking at that there will be a continuing lease modification going on, but you don't even enforce the existing lease. So what do they want? They want the collection from the Southwest Museum. They want to take the heritage from our children in Northeast L.A. and put it over in their Griffith Park museum. So we highly recommend that you submit this issue to the new city attorney for his consideration as to what should be done with the new lease and the statement of findings and the statement of overriding consideration.
Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. Following Mr. Weiss will be Miriam Fogler out in the San Fernando Valley.
Councilmembers, good morning. It was nice, you gave time to Jack O'Connell, or Jack O'Donnell, the state superintendent last week, Mr. Weezer, thank you very much for that. It kind of reminded me of Mr. Alarcon's promise to me about a couple of years ago that we were going to review some alternatives relative, in his committee, relative to governance because the president's report that Mr. Weezer and Mr. Padilla were kind enough to solicit is just kind of sitting on the shelf. I again call on Mr. Alarcon to follow through on that promise. There are a lot of good alternatives, or a couple of years, and that motion's basically going to expire. I think it's important that the mayor's partnership be evaluated. This is the job, I think, again, of the city council. I don't know of any other council office that has a private nonprofit program in their office. I think if any of you had your own program, nonprofit program in your office, I think that would cause some problems. We have the mayor's partnership operating out of the mayor's office. Wendy Gruel is going around soliciting ideas. I would suggest that maybe we look at that program, not because we want to be critical of the mayor, but because we want him to do the best job that he possibly can. And we don't know in this time and space whether or not the mayor can basically do the job that he's doing, given the resources that we have. And I think that, I would like to have, I would like to throw that out for Wendy Gruel's consideration. Lastly, having the kids here reminds me of, since they're from Mr. Parks' district, we have a need, I think, for athletic programs. I'd like to see an athletic league, a track and field league in District Fifteen, but Mr. Parks, since the kids are here, the idea is maybe we can get something going here for next track and field season. I think it would be terrific. And finally, with regard to another idea for Wendy Gruel, traffic mitigation monies, this will empower the people. If the people knew where the traffic mitigation monies were to basically finance EIRs or traffic studies, I think that would be something that she, it would be very helpful to the people to have that information. Thank you.
Now we go to Miriam Fogler out in the San Fernando Valley.
Hi, good morning to all, and cleaning Noel Weiss. I'm glad to see you back. And I have here the gentleman here running for Wendy And I have here the gentleman here running for Wendy Gruel's seat. He'll be up speaking next, went after Rick Nightingale. I'm here to tell you that I'm not happy what happened on what you did on number fifty-seven the other day. I'm here to speak on thirty-six, on the labor thing, and also on number forty-one, which is the litigation. I want to speak on that before you go into private, you know, closed session. Could you call me on public comment for that, please, before you go into closed session, Mr. President, Ms. President? I'm asking you a question. Can you do that for me? So I'm hoping that you're going to let me have that say here. For another matter here, you know, it's outrageous, the whole thing here with this budget thing. You people are hacking with the governor, and, you know, I mean, this is ridiculous. We need to return the CRA money back to the city. That's where the money is. That's where the money talks. We need to stop the building, because we got a water problem right now. We have a density problem. We have a traffic problem. We need to bring the CRA money back here, because we cannot close our libraries and parks and expect that these people, middle-class city workers, taking all the brunt of the beating when the police fire and DVP don't take any at all. And, you know, you people are the ones that are in charge here. You're the ones that sign your name on the dotted line. You're the ones that spend all this money, and you collect it. So you're the ones that should be responsible for it, not them. They're just workers. They're just doing their job like everybody else. So that's just the way it is. You need to be responsible, not them.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Our next speaker, again, out in the San Fernando Valley, is Donna Pearman. Following Donna Pearman will be Rick Nightingale.
Good morning, Mrs. Perry. I'm still mad about last Tuesday, two councilmen leaving, and I heard Garcetti said they did without excuses. If that's true, I think you should dock them, and they really didn't have any excuse. And I don't know what the buses, the man was talking about, saying that the buses are wonderful. Certainly, he doesn't take the seven-twenty Wilshire Boulevard, was I was on that bus, and it was packed up. The driver couldn't even see outside. And the police department is better than he should. Thank the LAPD, not the mayor. He's just... Yeah, the bus ran off fifteen minutes early, and it runs only once an hour, so they shouldn't have done that. Why do you always go after the hard-working employees, whether it be city, state, county? We don't see furloughs. We don't need furloughs for city, county, or state. It's not right. Some of these gave their all for the public. You tell them to sacrifice. They should be commended. They shouldn't be having to sacrifice for all the hard work they do. They should be giving out awards to these people. You should ask our CRA to give back to the city. You still continue wasting our money on all your agenda items, the CRA items, our fee waivers, the cost of Grand Avenue project, asking for a credit card for the city. You are the reason why our city is in such bad shape. You say it's all salaries? How's the rest of the city run, on pixie dust? It's all salaries? You tell me that, why this, they continue building huge projects? I see items on these agendas that cost millions of dollars. I don't believe it's all city. But if it is, the whole city should be giving. This is not the city where, well, this is the city the city employees should always give. Everybody lives in the city, and everybody should find a way to give. I'm willing to give my portion, even though I'm a federal employee, because it's the right thing to do. The city is in trouble, everybody. The homeless, everybody needs to give in some way or another. Thank you.
Rick Nightingale?
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. Yeah, still same, the budget. But, you know, let's go, I'll start with the school board. Everybody's crying about the money and so forth. They were really happy when they were getting forty percent of every dollar that went to Sacramento, when everybody was working, and everybody was buying different homes, and all that money was going up there. It was just like a windfall. But then they turn around, and they can't save, because everybody cannot put money away. If you do, somebody turns up, "We got that money. We can spend it." But look what they did with the lottery money. We voted right there and said it wouldn't go for salaries or anything else. Look at how much money would be sitting in the bank, because it was only supposed to be for extra computers or things like that. There'd be millions of dollars sitting in there, maybe. But no, they had to put it in the general fund, completely illegal, and nothing was done about it, because they're part of the establishment. And everything is about the establishment, because you are the establishment. You can do what you want, when you want, how you want, and illegally, the way you want to do it. Because it's been going on forever and ever, and there's nothing you can do about it, except for us people here talking to you people, and it really don't matter, but it does get in the news once in a great while. You don't answer to nobody except yourselves, and that's all. And regarding Schwarzenegger, yeah, I think he's doing a fabulous job. You people voted down, the last election or a few elections ago, he wanted a balanced budget, and you people in California voted no. It's your own fault, because it's this way, and he's doing his best to do it, and, yeah, I don't want the taxes raised. I pay enough taxes. I think everybody should pay taxes. I don't care how poor you are. It should be a percentage of what you make. That's fair. Fair is fair, no matter how you do it. So if you hear all these people crying how poor they are and so forth, if you'd put some money away, you wouldn't have the problem. And that goes for the council and everybody else in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Frank Scheftel in the San Fernando Valley.
Yes, thank you. Frank Scheftel, I'm a candidate for CD2 for Wendy Gruel's seat, and I look forward to that election coming up on September twenty-second. I want to talk today about the name change for the area of Van Nuys that is going to be Sherman Oaks soon. Newspaper reported on it this morning. Wendy has supported it. I acknowledge and respect the dedication and the efforts of all the neighborhood councils. I think they're very important to our communities. The Sherman Oaks and the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council have and continue to be a vital component to the success of their communities. As the next councilperson, I hope I will be, I would support all of the neighborhood councils and their efforts of what they do to the communities. Should this name change go forward, however, the area of Van Nuys still in CD2 will be limited to the area bordered by Van Owen and Saticoy and Hazeltine and Woodman. And although they're going to be designated, Van Nuys is going to Sherman Oaks, and Van Nuys is going to be diminished, I still will support Van Nuys. They will continue to be supportive. I think part of the problem, what people have said, is they're concerned that every time they turn on the news and they see something from Van Nuys, it's always about crime and everything else. And part of that issue is because our courthouse is located here. And I think maybe the people need to look, the council people need to look at maybe redesignating the area of the Van Nuys courthouse into the San Fernando Valley Civic Center. I think that would help a lot in getting out the word that the Van Nuys Civic Center is where everything is happening. So if something happens in Woodland Hills or Reseda, it's not being reported with a byline from Van Nuys. I think that's kind of why Van Nuys has gotten a bad reputation, and people aren't wanting to be a part of it. So I would encourage the city council to look at that. I congratulate Wendy Gruel on her new position as city controller. Look forward to working with her. And I appreciate the efforts that the city council is making in trying to straighten out the problems that our city is having right now. And I look forward to joining you and trying to do that in the coming months. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Back to City Hall for Maria Jimenez and Walter Bechtel. Is Ms. Jimenez here?
I'm here to complain about Gateway's Hospital Mental Health Center in Normandy Village, a facility that provides for disabled adults. I complied with all the requirements of the program so I could graduate and be discharged. All my due passes to leave the facility for a few hours were approved. On April eighth this year, I was given a verbal thirty-day notice of eviction. I had complained the day before about an employee, Darlene, a bad employee, that would barge into the rooms, bang on our doors with a piece of metal, and humiliate us in front of staff and other patients by yelling at us. The program director, Dr. Choi, defended her bad employee, and there were two petitions that the patients signed. There were eighteen patients that signed the first petition, and ten patients that signed the second petition. And there's no one really out there to advocate for us, for the disabled. And so the doctor lies, and she makes it seem like everything's all right, and it's not. After I complained, I was told that if I didn't like the staff, I could leave. So basically, I'm here to report her, because she gets funding from the Jewish Federation Council of Greater Los Angeles and the Short Doyle Plan of the County of LA. And they are evicting patients, and they are just putting them out into the street and sending them to shelters. And that's not right that the doctor is doing that. And so I would like to report again, Gateway's Hospital Mental Health Center in Normandy Village. And for any lawyers out there, my telephone number is area code three-two-three-five-one-seven-one-five-zero, three-two-three-five-one-seven-one-five-one-zero. My name is Maria Jimenez, and I would like to file a lawsuit against them for what they did to me and what they're doing to other patients there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Walter Bechtel, you are our next speaker.
Morning, thank you. I wanted to come back and say something. I was talking about the Los Angeles Police Department and the consent decree and some of the problems that we were witnessing out there. I do notice and I recognize the fact that every time I walk down the sidewalk, police officers are stopping people and talking to them for no apparent reason at all. And it dawned on me that if the LAPD has so much money right now, why can't you people hire an anthropologist to train your officers? The differences between somebody who looks like he might be a suspect and somebody who really is a suspect, because it appears to me that you're not stopping people based upon an understanding, a cultural understanding. Different people from different cultures act different ways, and what may be suspicious among white people or among black people or oriental people is not a thing, an activity that is suspicious in the individual's culture. So also, I wanted to say that the LAPD still has not come and talked to me about the issues I was talking to you about, theft and illegal wiretapping. And I would like to remind the council that inaction on their part makes them a priority to the crime. And inaction on your part, after two or three years now, it's been almost three years, also would make you, by inaction, a priority to the crime itself. I would appreciate that somebody would talk to me about that, because I have been given no indication that anybody is talking to me. And I hope when Ms. Gruel came in here last Friday, she explained how music is made. It's not just one person. There's several of us involved there. So if somebody would please talk to me about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. All right, thank you very much. That marks the end of our public comment, and then we will go to take an item out of order at the request of Mr. Parks. I believe that is item number forty. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have an opportunity to honor several causes. One, to honor the fact that this one-hundred-year anniversary of the modern Olympic movement, in which we wanted to bring attention to. We're also, because one of our major cities is in the running for the 2016 Olympics, we wanted to encourage through our resolution that they be given significant attention in that regard, in the sense of bringing the 2016 Olympics to the United States. And then we wanted to highlight the Ready Set Gold program, in which Olympians work with some of our schools in our community. I'd like to ask several people to come up at this time. Anita de France, who we all know as the president of LA-84 Foundation. She is a former Olympian, a former bronze medal winner in the Olympics. Also, we'd ask Mr. David Simon to come up, president of Southern California Committee for the Olympic Games. And he's very involved in a celebration coming up very soon, in which the City of LA is going to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the 1984 Games in the City of Los Angeles. Also, I'd like to ask Olympian Ronaldo Brown to come up. Ronaldo, as a Compton High School seventeen-year-old, represented the City of Los Angeles in the Mexico Olympics, and then later in the Munich Olympics, is the first high school athlete to jump over seven feet in the track meet. Later set the record for small colleges at seven feet, seven feet, four inches. And so he's here with his wife, Carol. And also, I'd like to introduce our assistant principal at Lauryn Miller Elementary, Brenda Cortez, is here. And then the director of the Ready Set Gold program, Bernadine Bettner. And then the most important group of people, I'd like to make sure every council member gets an opportunity to acknowledge the over one hundred students from Lauryn Miller Elementary School. Would you please stand? As all of us know, Lauryn Miller has got a special place in our heart of the city, has been a renowned civil rights attorney, had made a great deal of accomplishments, was one of the mainstays, actually, to cut out covenants in many of our real estate properties throughout the city. We have not only a park named after Lauryn Miller, but also a elementary school. And so we wanted to bring all this together today in this honor and ask, first of all, if we can ask Mr. France to kick it off, and then Mr. Simon, then we bring up our Olympian.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you, city council. Appreciate deeply the opportunity to be here on behalf of what is known as International Olympic Day. Throughout the world, people are celebrating the fact that the Olympic movement was created in nineteen, sorry, eighteen ninety-four on this day. And from that committee came the Olympic Games, which have twice been held here in Los Angeles, and twice been extraordinarily successful. Because of the 1984 Games, the 1984 Foundation has been serving this community since 1984. We've reached more than two million kids. We put more than a hundred and seventy million dollars back in the community from those games, and these are all clients, and our future, for which we are grateful. So thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Yes, that other city, should I name the other city that's running?
You can name it.
It's Chicago. So wish them well. They have a good chance of winning the right to host the 2016 Olympic Games. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anita. I just want to tell you very briefly about the Ready Set Gold program, because I think that for some of you, this is something new. But when we bid for the 2016 Olympics for Los Angeles a couple of years ago, you'll recall, of course, we did lose to Chicago in that effort. But we created a program for that bid that lives on, and that's Ready Set Gold. And Ready Set Gold operates in LAUSD schools. We're currently in fifty schools. We just finished our third year. And the concept is that an Olympian from the local area is assigned to a school, and over the course of the school year, they visit the school five times. They mentor the kids, and the goal is to get the kids to improve the scores on their annual state-required fitness tests. And in the three years we've been going, in the schools where we've been all three years, we have a forty-one percent increase in the percentage of kids that pass their state-required fitness gram test, and it's due to the fifty Olympians. So we have one of them here today, and I'm going to let him tell you about it. Ray Brown is our Olympian for Lauryn Miller School. So, Ray?
Well, thank you, Councilman Parks and the council people out there. I appreciate being here. This Ready Set Gold program is a program that is really great for the kids. And I had a couple of people ask me, "What was the Olympic Village like?" This is like the Olympic Village. Everybody's excited and eager to meet people and want to do things. And you guys out there are the ones that's doing it, the kids. We're doing a lot for them. They're eager, and they're happy to be here. And we're so glad that Bernadine has got this program and David has got the Ready Set Gold program to go. I had started in a program similar to this in growing up in the City of Compton. And it kept me out of trouble, and we want to keep these kids out of trouble. We want them to enjoy what we are teaching them, and they are enjoying it. So let's keep them excited, and let's keep everything going for them. Thank you.
Thank you, city council, for honoring us today, and for all the Olympians who are not here, and for all the Olympians who have participated in this program. This program has been a joy and a treasure to work with. These kids are our future, and let's go USA and go Olympics.
Thank you very much. Would like to present a resolution... Would like to present a resolution from the City Council to Anita and to David, so that we can say our support is here. We'd like to make sure that the city's on record as to participating in that Olympic Day. We also went in one of our archives and actually found an Olympic torch. And so, so we, I had it stuck on my drawer somewhere.
We've been looking for it.
David said, this is the torch. I've had it for several years, I have no idea who gave it to me, but it's from Atlanta.
Ninety-six, yeah.
And so, we wanted to make sure we had it, so David can eliminate that crime report they've been looking for. Thank you very much. We're going to take the kids out on the Spring Side for a photo opportunity, so any council members like to join, we certainly make that available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange?
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Thank you for bringing all these fine young people here with the Ready Set Gold program. Olympian Brown, it's so special to see you, a graduate of Compton High School and Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And as Janice Hahn was saying, it was in 1968 Mexico City Games, which she attended with her great-late father, that the Fosbury flop came through, which was a change in the whole way, to the children who you brought down here today. The inspiration you gave us all when you did the Pledge of Allegiance shows what's in your heart and what's in your mind as great young people who are interested in this program to help lift you to higher levels. And to the eighty-four, LA 84, the Foundation, to the Southern California Olympic Committee, this is what the late, great Tom Bradley, this is what, whose tower, I hope you go to the top, named after the mayor, that John Farrell, who this room's named after, to all those who were involved with the Olympic movement 25 years ago feel so strongly about, this is the legacy. What a great day to remember, Olympic Day, not just here, but throughout the world. Thank you very much for all coming down, and I'm just honored to see your presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. We need to vote on that item, please, so would you please open the roll, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Our next item, again, out of order. Yes, Mr. Lavange. Fourth with on item four, for Mr. Lavange. Mr. Garcetti, item 26 is next.
Do we have cards on that? Do we have cards on it? They're starting with the public, the public hearing first, and colleagues, just by quick framing, well, why don't I speak first and then maybe we'll open up the public, or hear the public hearing. Today, colleagues, we call on our nation's leaders to begin the hard work of comprehensive immigration reform. For too long, Band-Aid after Band-Aid was put on a broken system. We know that it has not worked, it has failed our cities, it has failed our country, and we can't afford to take the approach of the previous administration that unfortunately had some momentum towards immigration reform, but then moved away from that. Our leaders in Washington need to roll up their sleeves and work together on comprehensive, equitable, humane policy for our immigration. In the city, we have led the way on behalf of immigrant rights. Early on, the city of LA mandated that all departments accept the matrícula consular cards as a legitimate form of identification. My colleague Jose Wizar and I introduced a motion to require hotels and motels in the city to accept the matrícula as well. We partnered with several civil rights groups such as CHIRLA and ADL, APALC, LAFLA, GLAD and MALDEF, to pass a declaration in LA in the City Council denouncing vigilantes, condemning xenophobic rhetoric, and especially about Latino immigration, and stressing the importance of protecting civil and human rights of immigrants. The city has worked hard to pay day laborers by creating centers next to big-box retailers where we can control the excesses and the unregulated work of day laborers and instead have a place where people can learn, be educated, and work in a safe, clean environment. However, there's only so much a city can do on its own. We need leadership in Washington, and I think luckily now we have it. We're very hopeful that the administration and Congress will work together to recommit our country to being both a nation of laws and a nation of immigrants. We need to improve the economic situation of all workers here in the U.S. This can be done through economic immigration reform. We need to create a path for citizenship for undocumented, so they can come out of the shadows and join society. We need to reform visa programs to keep families together, to help keep unified partners and spouses, to protect workers' rights, so that nobody in this country sees workers' rights diminished by our lack of immigration reform, to regulate and control rather than having things be illegal and chaotic. And we need to implement smart and effective measures targeted at the worst violators of immigration and labor law. The city was founded as a city of migrants. The pobladores who came here took the trek and came from every corner of the earth. They came from Africa and Asia, they came from the Americas and from Europe. The integration of human, of, sorry, of immigrant and a comprehensive approach to solve our problems is critical to ensure our economy here locally. So, we begin this work today, we call on our leaders to do that, and we become part of a course that has really erupted here from Los Angeles to say, this is now a time to get serious, to put apart the divisive and partisan rhetoric, to say, this is something that all Americans have a stake in. Our schools, our economy, our worker conditions, all will benefit from having good and universal labor and immigration laws. So, I want to thank the coalition that has so powerfully and so strong joined together, whether it's business and labor, our religious institutions, that have said that there is a moral as well as an economic and political imperative, and have moved forward with those discussions with members of Congress and the House and the Senate and with our administration to make sure that we can become that nation of laws again and that nation of immigrants that has made us so strong here in Los Angeles and in America. And with that, I look forward to hearing from those community leaders, and I urge your support today.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'm going to call up the speakers on this item. Angelica Salas, Sarah Sudwani, and Mike Garcia, first three speakers.
First, I want to begin by just saying thank you to our council president Garcetti, to all the authors of this resolution, council member Reyes, Cardenas, Wizar, Zain, and Alarcon. I thank you because you continue to stand with the residents of Los Angeles, these residents that keep fighting to pass comprehensive immigration reform that's just and humane. No other city stands to benefit from the passage of immigration reform than the city of Los Angeles. Today, the city of Los Angeles has the largest share of the over 1 million undocumented workers in Los Angeles County. Los Angeles is also home to the children of immigrants. And these immigrants, these young people that you talked about today that were in this room, 63% of them actually are the children of immigrants. 87% of them are the children, are actually U.S. citizens. These are the members of our community that cannot succeed, cannot thrive without just and humane immigration reform. LA residents are in constant fear of being the next person or the next family destroyed because of deportation. These are the children who live in fear of losing their parents or themselves having to live the only city that they know as home. But as a city, we also cannot move forward if immigration reform does not pass. The city of Los Angeles cannot continue to operate with an underground community or an underground economy. Last year, 397 people were deported. Over 70% of the people deported were working people, and 40% of the people who were deported last year came from Los Angeles. They lived and worked here. The city of Los Angeles needs all its workers to work legally and be confident that they will not be dismissed or arrested simply for working. The city of Los Angeles needs to ensure that all employers and all employees are paying their fair share in the tax stream, and that is critical for moving our city forward. Los Angeles needs to continue leading in passing immigration reform.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
We cannot move forward if we don't pass it.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sarah Sudwani, Director of the Immigrant Rights Project at the Asian Pacific American Legal Center of Southern California. On behalf of the Legal Center and on behalf of Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities throughout the city of Los Angeles, I thank you so much for supporting the national efforts to reform our immigration system. Family unity is a key component of our immigration system, but it is also a fundamental American value. As a society, we value keeping parents and children together. This is reflected in federal and state disability laws, which allow adults time off from work, in compensation to care for ailing parents or a partner, and in family law, which strongly prioritizes finding solutions that keep children with their parents. In theory, immigration law also prioritizes family unity, but unfortunately, the immigration system is broken. Many Asian-American and Pacific Islander families are forced to wait decades to be reunited with their loved ones. Chinese, Indian, and Filipino families, among others, all face wait times of over 10 years to be reunited with members of their families stuck in the immigration backlogs. Given the lack of legal channels to immigrate, others resort to coming without papers or overstaying visas to join their families. Within our API communities, an estimated 1.5 million people live without documentation. Among Korean-Americans, for example, roughly 1 in 5 is undocumented. In addition, over the last decade, civil liberties of immigrant communities have been rolled back, leaving many API families, especially South Asian and Muslim families, torn apart by sweeping detentions and deportations, often without access to fair hearings or legal representation. In 2008, without the input of community advocates or Congress, the U.S. Customs and Immigration Services signed a repatriation agreement with Vietnam, which subjects certain Vietnamese nationals to repatriation to a land many of them have never known. I thank you so much for once again supporting national efforts to reform our immigration system, and I call upon you all to be agents of change, to make this resolution known to your colleagues holding federal offices, and to share with other cities across the nation the positive impact immigrants have had on the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mike Garcia. Mike Garcia, are you here? All right, we'll go on to Andrea Chavez Long.
My name is Andrea. I am a senior sociology and humanities double major at a private university in Los Angeles. After graduating high school with a 3.8 GPA, I earned a scholarship to attend college. I'm also living with the legal and everyday insecurities of being undocumented. I have the privilege to represent the AB 540 and undocumented student communities when I say thank you to the LA City Council and City Council President Eric Garcetti for not only acknowledging the need for just and humane immigration reform, but for ultimately supporting my future and the futures of countless other students who cannot make their voices heard in this debate for fear of deportation and detention. It is not easy to stand before you and speak so openly about my immigration status after being implicated from childhood never to speak about the issue. However, I realize now how damaging my silence has been to me. I think that it is essential for me to speak about this publicly and in the first person in order to dispel many of the myths about immigrants. Both of my parents work, they file taxes and pay the mortgage every month. When I was a year and eight months, my mother and I flew into LAX from Pisco, Peru to meet my father, a Chinese immigrant. I've lived here ever since and truly do not know of any other home but Los Angeles. It was not until very recently that my father's immigration case has moved forward enough for us to be granted a work permit and license, for which I am thoroughly overjoyed and grateful for. However, my status is still unresolved. The time we wait is indeterminate and out of our hands, and I still cannot access the sort of resources I will need to be a complete adult. For example, I still cannot access financial aid for my postgraduate goals. After this hearing, I will be participating in the West Coast Dream graduation, just outside, on the front steps of City Hall. I invite you to join us in support of the students here today from all over California to hear their stories of overcoming barriers and their struggle to attain an education. I want to one day become a lawyer and a professor, but this won't be possible until there is a just humane immigration reform bill passed. So, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Marvin Andrade is our next speaker.
President Garcetti and members of the City Council, good morning. My name is Marvin Andrade, I'm the executive director at the Central American Resource Center, CARESCE, and I am here today on behalf of CARESCE in support of this agenda item number 26, relative to the city's position on federal legislation that would reform the immigration system. The city of Los Angeles is one of the most diverse in the nation. It is a world-class metropolitan area that attracts immigrants from around the globe. It has the highest concentration of immigrants in the United States. In the greater Pico Union, Westlake, Woolshire, Echo Park areas of Los Angeles where CARESCE is located, we can find the largest Salvadoran, Guatemalan, Thai, Filipino, and Korean communities outside their particular countries. This resolution is an important and symbolic action by the city of Los Angeles that recognizes that our immigration system is broken and a just humane immigration reform is part of the economy recovery, that we welcome our diversity, that we embrace immigrants, and that it is critical for the city of Los Angeles to support such actions for its growth and its development. I want to thank the leadership of President Garcetti and the other co-authors of this resolution, council member Cardenas, Alarcon, Wizar, and Zain for their leadership in support of this very important resolution and something that is very, very important for our community. Thank you.
Margarito Martinez?
Gracias a todos por colaborar en este aspecto sobre la vida de la persona. Represento LA Voice, gracias al consejo también, por trabajar con nosotros en esta lucha por una reforma migratoria. Represento en esta mañana a todos los que no tienen voz, a los miembros de nuestra parroquia de LA Voice.
Sí, señor. Momento, por favor.
Necesito traducción en inglés. Gracias. Represento a todos los que no tienen voz completamente, a los de nuestra parroquia de LA Voice. En ellos hay mucha gente, muchos hermanos y hermanas.
Amongst them, there is a lot of people, a lot of brothers and sisters who...
Como en todos los lugares que carecen de documentos.
Like in a lot of other areas, they do not have legal status.
La semana pasada tuve una eucaristía, en donde pedíamos por la madre de muchas familias que murió.
Last week, we had a religious ceremony, at which time we were praying for the mother and the child. She passed away.
Como todas las situaciones, esta situación parte el corazón.
Like in a lot of situations, this type of situation really breaks your heart.
Al ver que también como ustedes, ellos tienen sentimientos, quieren llorar y abrazar a sus muertos y no pueden ir a hacerlo.
Like you guys, they also have feelings, they would like to go and hug. They're dead, but they're not able to go and give their grief.
Pero no podrían regresar.
I mean, they are able to go, but they will not be able to return.
Es mucho el dolor que parte a niños, jóvenes, adultos, en general a las familias.
It's a lot of pain that children, young people in general suffer.
Recordando, nosotros no damos la dignidad a la persona, la dignidad, que es el valor de la persona, la de Dios.
The dignity to a person, it's...
Obstaculizamos en ese sentido y olvidamos que ellos tienen un valor igual que nosotros.
In this sense, we create a barrier and we forget that they also have value like the rest of us.
Gracias por apoyarla de forma que esperemos que se haga posible.
Thank you for supporting this reform, and we hope that it becomes a reality. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, I believe it's Erasio Rojas?
Hola, muy buenos dias. Estamos aquí presentes para apoyar la reforma migratoria. We're here in support of the immigration reform. Estamos aquí para apoyar la reforma migratoria. Sí. We're here in support of the immigration reform. Yo fui uno de los miembros de la redada de Benais del 2008. I was one of the members that suffered in the Benais raid in 2008. Estoy aquí presente con mis dos niñas. I'm here present with my two daughters. Las cuales, la mayor de ocho años. Cada vez que vengo a corte, está insegura si voy a regresar o no a casa. The eight-year-old, every time we watch court, we, she's very afraid, she's not sure if I will ever come back home. La niña que tengo en brazos es el símbolo de la redada que pasó. The little girl I have in my arm, she's a symbol of the raid that took place. Acababa de nacer, tenía ocho días. Because she had just been born, she was only eight days old. Las cuales, ella no sabe de lo que yo estoy pasando. And she doesn't know what I've been going through. El día de mañana que ella me pregunte, ¿y si me quedo aquí? Tomorrow... Tomorrow...
Tomorrow, when she asks me...
La historia que me está pasando.
Tomorrow, when she asks me, are you able to stay here? I will let her know the story that we're all going through, and what I would like to let you know, ladies and gentlemen.
Que nos apoyen en una reforma migratoria para todas las familias.
What I would like to let you know, and also ask of you is to please support all of us for an immigration reform for all the families.
Las cuales, ustedes se dan cuenta de lo que está pasando en Arizona.
All the families, and you are sure...
Por la redada que pasó apenas.
Momento, señor. I'm sure you're aware of what just happened in Arizona, the recent raid that just happened.
Sí. Las cuales, se refleja las familias que nos quedamos, y las niñas que se quedan sin padres.
And this is a reflection of the families and children that stay without their parents.
Es todo lo que les pido, y que nos apoyen para una reforma migratoria para este año.
This is all I ask of you. I please ask for your support for an immigration reform for this year, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Carol Kim. Is Carol Kim here? Following Carol Kim will be Adriana Tome. Adriana?
Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak at this timely hearing. My name is Carol Kim, and I'm Policy Manager at the National Korean-American Service and Education Consortium located in the city of Los Angeles. We wanted to... Okay. We wanted to thank the City Council for its leadership, as well as for President Council Members Eric Garcetti's leadership in issuing this resolution, recognizing the importance of immigrant integration and the need in passing just and humane immigration reform that will strengthen our communities and our economy. Our affiliate, the Korean Resource Center, has been empowering and serving the Korean-American community for 25 years, and is an affiliate of the National Korean-American Service and Education Consortium. We're a national consortium of community-based Korean-American grassroots organizations, and both KRC and NACASEC have all come face to face with stories of the daily struggles or community encounters to become fully integrated into American society. The need to find workable solutions to our broken immigration system is of specific interest to our communities. Nearly 400,000 Asian-American and Pacific Islanders and over 96,000 AP Korean-Americans in Los Angeles, living in Los Angeles, of which an estimated 75% are immigrants. In fact, we have the largest Korean-American population outside of the Korean Peninsula, and many of them are caught up in the family immigration system backlogs, where loved ones are enduring long periods of separation. They've also been swept up in the raids and have found themselves in detention centers, where there are little to no language services available for Asian languages like Korean. In addition, we've met many talented youth, young people, who are unable to realize their full potential in higher education during our work on the Dream Act. Thank you very much, and again, we'd like to thank the City Council for its support of the resolution.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Adriana Tome. Following Adriana will be Patricia Salazar.
I am from Honduras. I represent a lot of people from working the class... Who have been in justified...
And exploited.
...unexploited. We come from this great country, America, because it is a country that opens its arms to all immigrants. I plead for justice, for justice, because as a Hasbro worker, I was held hostage at my workplace only because my employer refused to pay me salary. They hired me several times, locked me in my room, and hit me. I tried to get help, but the police was unwilling to help me because I am undocumented. But not supporting a just human immigration reform will be allowed more cases like mine to continue. As immigrants, we also contribute to this economy. I ask you to please support a just human immigration reform.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patricia Salazar.
Soy Patricia Salazar.
My name is Patricia Salazar.
Y vengo, vengo de parte de COFEM, de la Confederación de Federaciones Mexicanas.
I'm here on behalf of COFEM, the Federation of...
Y vengo, venimos...
Mexicans.
...para apoyar la resolución de la reforma migratoria.
We're here in support of the immigration reform resolution.
Reforma que ayudará a millones de personas, como todos sabemos.
This is a reform that's going to help millions of people, as we all know.
A la ciudadanía.
It's going to help the citizenship.
Y así mejorar las condiciones de los trabajadores.
This is going to create a better working condition for the workers.
Logrando la unidad de las familias.
It's going to achieve family unity.
COFEM, venimos a este consejo, a este concilio de Los Ángeles, por su gran importancia que tiene a nivel nacional.
COFEM is here visiting your City Council because you have your great importance at a national level.
Porque sabemos que puede ser el líder para que se abra y se haga una realidad.
And I know that you can be the leader so that this can become a reality, and you can open doors.
La reforma migratoria. Muchas gracias.
If this immigration reform is approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker. Matthew Dowd.
All right, thank you. This is a big one, but I had a comment card in too on the Olympic one, if you could reconsider that. So in honor of that, I'll have an Olympic comment on this one. And this, see, I've got a comment on the federal legislation and on the Los Angeles City Council position, because I am an immigrant and I'm qualified, very qualified. See, I've got to tell these people, it all looks warm and fluffy sometimes, but before the federal elections, they were tossing around some things that, you know, you're going to have to come up with a bunch of money to pay fines if you're illegal for all the thing, all the time you've been here, and the head of the family's going to have to go back to their original country, and when that happens, the rest of the family is just going to follow naturally. It's one of the things they're going to use. Be very careful of what they're doing here. It's never what it looks like. As far as the City Council here, see, they're violating the due process rights of people right in their own backyard, and yet they hold up a document like this saying they're supporting these federal changes, and one of them here is respecting the due process rights of all in the United States. But I'm with Michael Hunt on a federal case against the city, and a judge ruled that his due process was violated, and that should have been over, but now the city's appealing. So you're not even respecting the federal judge. So this is hypocrisy, because on the one hand, you're saying, oh, yeah, Barack Obama, we're all going to do this, and it's all going to be wonderful, but it's not. So if you're watching this on the internet and you're not in Los Angeles, don't come here, because they're hypocrites, and on one hand, they say they're respecting the United States Constitution, but I'm here to tell you they're not.
Ms. Martha Jimenez. Martha Jimenez.
Yes, my name is Martha Jimenez. I'm the civic engagement for the Federación Sacaticana de Sur de California. It is one of the biggest Mexican hometown associations in the United States, and most of our members are beneficiaries of the 1986 ERCAP program. I myself have been a beneficiary and was able to attend UCLA. I am here to ask the city of Los Angeles government to please approve the resolution that was presented on behalf of City Council Member Eric Garcetti as part of the 2009-2010 federal legislative program in support of a comprehensive humane immigration reform leading to a path towards citizenship. The city of Los Angeles is a trailblazer and a beacon of hope when it comes to advocating for immigrants' rights. Today is a wonderful opportunity to tell the U.S. government that we want, as a city, to be a leader nationwide. It is a time to take undocumented immigrants out of the shadows, just like President Barack Obama has said. The city of Los Angeles, by accepting such innovative resolution, will set a precedent of starting a campaign that unites labor unions, community groups, faith organizations, civil rights groups, immigrant communities, families, and individuals all over the country. Si se puede, we only hope that you will seek for justice through this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That marks the end of our public speaking cards. Our first speaker in the queue is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues for allowing this resolution to be in front of us so we can make some, I think, critical observations and also a statement as the second-largest city in this country. I want to thank our leadership who signed on to this resolution. On June 19th, President Obama, at the Esperanza National Hispanic Prayer Breakfast and Conference, stated that there is no definitive timetable for passing legislation, but that the federal government has taken action in strengthening and securing our borders. While I think that is important to understand that we are taking steps to secure our borders, but we also know that, as we heard today from families and advocates, that American citizens, individuals who are right now in a place where they just want to fulfill the American dream and just live a decent life, that we need to take action against those employers that essentially exploit illegal immigrants to drive down wages. We need to understand that unless we pass this type of legislation, the level of abuse that we have seen occur over and over again across the country will not stop. I sit on the National Executive Board of National League of Cities. I have seen councilmembers and mayors of other cities talk about how industries are collapsing because of the punitive measures certain states have taken against workers, where the construction industry, the lumbering industry, some of the cattle industry is literally falling apart. And this is the worst thing that could happen. We are so tied to the world economy. So it's with great, great pleasure that I stand before you, urging you to vote as an eye vote, encouraging our federal government to take real account for human beings, for individuals who work hard for this country, who are paying taxes, who are relegated to live in the shadows at the cost of our young children, at the cost of families who are falling apart because they continue to have to migrate, they can't afford the rising rents, the cost of rents, they can't afford to allow to even go to the police at times because of fear of being deported. This is not a society that speaks to a healthy environment when we have those types of fears. I'm hoping that the president will support the Dream Act, because we have thousands and thousands of young people who are working hard, travel on the bus, make incredible sacrifices, are getting As, are qualifying for great universities, and are told they cannot move any further because we don't have a Dream Act in place. So as an international city, as an international country, a country of immigrants, we need to take a strong stance and encourage the federal government to assume that role of providing some enlightened legislation to move forward. So I thank you for this opportunity. A los padres, gracias por estando aquí. Los sacrificios son tremendos, pero la lucha va a seguir. Ojalá que sigan con más ánimo y más esperanza. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Wezar is our next speaker.
First, I want to thank all the speakers who came out today to show support for this, and thank our President Garcetti, who consistently raises this issue in council. And let me say that I think, and we all know, that the timing is right for the federal government, for Congress, and this president to do something about comprehensive immigration reform. And if you recall back in '05 and '06, when we saw hundreds of thousands of people marching not only in the streets of the city of Los Angeles, but throughout the country, people were doing it out of fear because the climate in Washington was such that people were being attacked. People were attacking people for who they are and not what the policy was about. It's a very different situation now. We have an environment now where I think we can talk in Washington, and we could come up with some reasonable, comprehensive reform to our immigration policies, which simply don't make sense right now. Secondly, the timing is right, because one of the most important issues that this country is facing at this moment is the economy. It's in shambles. But study after study shows that if you bring people out of the shadows, out of the underground economy, it's going to help our formal economy get out of its current situation. So I hope that people do see this, that they think about reason, and not only about reason and what makes economic sense, but what makes moral sense. I'll tell you, this country fights against countries who are pulling families apart. We are on record saying that it is not a human right, or that we are violating human, or other countries are violating human rights when they pull families apart, but this country is doing that. It's hypocritical. And it wasn't always like that. In the 1970s, this country did have a policy that if you or a relative were born in this country... This country was built upon a strong family unit, and it believed in keeping their family unit together because it builds strong neighborhoods, it builds a strong country, and it builds a sense of belonging and being together, which does and prevents other issues such as crime and disarray in this country. But it wasn't until the '80s that that policy changed. So let's go back to that policy where we did believe in an American ideal to keep the family unit together. You know, my family migrated to this country, and I think of many of my relatives who, if it wasn't for that family reunification policy of the '70s, some of them would be living here, some of them will be living in Mexico, but let me tell you, my young cousins, if they didn't have that strong sense of family and direction from their parents, imagine what that would have been like for them. So it's the timing that's right, it's an economic issue, it's a moral issue. Let's urge everyone to work on this together, and I thank my colleagues for their support on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President, and to my colleagues that sign on to this. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardinals, Mr. Alacón, Mr. Wezar, and Councilman Dennis Zine, not Latino. However, I strongly support this, and I was the National League of Cities representative on the Immigration Task Force to come up with a plan, which we spent two years coming up with a plan to bring about some reasonable immigration reform for the United States. And the task force established by National League of Cities had representation from the Latino community, African-American community, Asian community, Anglo community, all representatives of the community of the United States were on this task force. And our goal was to establish a platform that was reasonable, that would lead a pathway to citizenship, to eliminate the problems that we currently have, not only in Los Angeles, but throughout the United States. The National League of Cities now has that as our standing policy, working with the administration to try and make this happen, and hopefully it'll happen sooner than later. But all the folks that listen, all the folks that are participating, all of the people who are here in Los Angeles and around the country, understand that the official position of National League of Cities, which represents large and small cities around the United States, is strongly supportive of this, and I was very honored to chair the task force that brought about the comprehensive package that will bring about what we're all looking for, what we're all asking for in this particular resolution. We've been speaking about this for a long, long time. We don't see movement in the federal government at this time. We've seen movement in the past, and right now, it's stagnant. It's not moving. We need to put pressure on our federal representation to get this package move forward and finally come to completion so we can bring the folks who are here, who are working hard, paying taxes, assimilate them with our society, and not let them feel like they're... taxes, assimilate them with our society, and not let them feel like they're outsiders. We are a city of immigrants, we're a nation of immigrants, and this is the right thing to do. So my colleagues, thank you for the resolution. I'm very proud to second this and also add that it's frustrating for me to spend two years with many elected officials around the country coming up with a package that we know will work and for the federal government not to move on it. And I appreciate the folks that are here supporting this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Mr. Alarcon.
Members, it's a pleasure to support this motion. The truth is that a democracy is only as strong as its willingness to embrace the truth. And the truth is also that there are 12 million undocumented workers in the United States, workers that the federal government turns a blind eye toward in complicity with industry and business to drive down the wages for all Americans in the workforce. The fact is that these workers have been ripped off in so many different ways. They contribute wholly to the social security system, they don't get the benefits of the social security system. They don't pay sufficient taxes because they're not in a position to fight for better wages, decent wages that value the work at what it should be valued at, which means that when they go to buy a home, they get ripped off by the mortgage companies and the banks to allow them to purchase a home that they couldn't afford in the first place and diminish their opportunities to participate in our society wholly. So for those people who think this is just an immigrant measure, this is affecting each and every American. It has, it is this, this blind-eyed approach of the federal government that undermined our economy, and it is wholly to blame for the situation we are in with regard to our economy today. The 12 million workers are not going back. They are here. This country needs to recognize them and give them full status as Americans so that they can contribute even more to our society, and in doing so, all the ships will rise. This measure is about fairness, this is about dignity, this is about moral perpetuity, this is about making America stronger. It is sad that just about the only way to get expedited through the naturalization process is to go to Iraq and die, and then you'll get your citizenship status. We don't need for people to die when they are contributing to their local communities, when they are law-abiding citizens, when they are, when their children are American citizens. We don't need for them to go to war. We need them to stay here, make America strong, so that we can avoid the wars in the first place. But we can't do that as long as the federal government turns a blind eye to the reality of the undocumented population in this country. They are part of America. Like it or not, they are part of America and they are contributing to us. Let's help them contribute more by making their families stronger, by giving them a stronger place in the workforce to fight for decent wages and benefits so that all Americans can benefit. Let's give them a place that they deserve because they have been here for so many years without legal status. That is wrong. On a human level, it's wrong. On an economic level, it's wrong. On a democratic level. Let's change it. Now's the time to do it.
Mr. Lavaz is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I rise to support this measure. It's absolutely important that this country stand for everybody and everybody that's here. 130 years ago, my grandfather came from Berlin, Germany, lives right up the street from the city hall, 310 North Main. Another 100 years ago, my grandfather came from Ireland, and he was a Los Angeles police officer from 1919 to 1943. Unless we bring everybody in, the house isn't the right house. Unless we bring everybody in and know what the standards are and how we want to live and how people should live, it's very important. That's what America's been to everybody, and to not focus on this is not doing the right thing. So I wanted to stand and thank all my colleagues who are very passionate about this and all the work that they do on National League of Cities. It's very important. I see Mr. Sealy is here from Washington, who's our representative, and it's the voice of the cities that need to help Congress do the right thing along with the federal administration and correct the ills of this issue that is, that they think is going to go away. It's not going to go away until we make it right, and I support this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lavaz. Mr. Cardenas?
I just want to thank my colleagues for giving their perspectives on this very, very important issue. I just want to very bluntly say, this is not about immigrants. This is about the United States of America, and we need to support this because if you look back as far as this, the Constitution of this country, who wrote it? Immigrants wrote the Constitution. When you look at every era of this country, the most glorious times of this country, the most successful things that have ever occurred in this country were done by the hands of immigrants along with the values of this country. And if we don't embrace this, then I think we're losing the values of this country as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. There are no further speakers in the queue. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, for the record, Councilmember Reyes was one of the co-authors on the resolution. It was inadvertently left off the council agenda.
Thank you for correcting the record. I appreciate that. Also, just a note to Mr. Garcia, I did call your name for the record during the public comment portion. All right, so if you would, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Madam President, there was a request to continue item 36 for one day to June 24th.
All right, without objection. And then Mr. Zine has requested that item 37 be taken up next. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. We have CAO, UCLA here on this matter. This regards the office of the city attorney. This matter was brought to my attention by our city attorney-elect regarding the city charter and the ability under the city charter to have eight positions, four attorneys, four nonpositions, in the office that selected by the city attorney. And currently, those positions are all with tenure, and the charter states that the appointment of all persons serving to the pleasure of the city attorney shall terminate when the succeeding city attorney is sworn in. And that's the concern, that's the issue. So the new city attorney-elect wants those eight positions, and he has the right, according to the charter, to have those eight positions. And the problem right now is that those positions are locked down. So how do we fix that?
Carolyn Cooper with the CAO's office, and with me is Ida Rubio, also with the CAO's office. What we have prepared to do is to authorize substitute authority positions to enable the new administration to bring in those positions.
Now, substitute authority, what about the funding for the eight positions since the city attorney's office was cut $18 million in the current, or the new budget? There's $18 million reduction in the, from the shared responsibility and sacrifice. So if he's being cut $18 million, where are we going to find the dollars to fund these eight positions?
The city attorney's office has identified an off-budget funding source that will free up general fund money, which can then be used to fund these eight positions.
And what fund is that coming from?
It's called the Consumer Protection Prosecution Trust Fund. It's Fund 550, and...
Do you hold my time, please?
Money in this fund has been accumulated throughout the current administration.
How much is in that fund?
Some of this fund was used for the year-end transfer in the amount of $850,000, I'm sorry, $805,563,000. And after the year-end transfer occurs, there will be a balance in the account of $932,000.
Okay, and what will...
That's before this transfer request.
$932,000?
Before this transfer request. After the transfer request, there will be a small balance in the account of about $51,000. And the department does need some type of a balance in the account to pay for expenses related to these consumer protection cases.
And what will the cost be for the eight positions, the four attorney and the four
The total direct salary cost is estimated at about $1.00 million.
1. what?
1.1 million, 86, 532,000 dollars.
Okay, 1.8 million.
Correct. The related costs, including related costs, the total amount would be 1.3 million.
Okay, where's that money coming from if there's only 932?
The transfer request is only asking for the $881,000. It's our understanding that one of the positions will possibly be vacated. That position is a regular position authority, which would then allow the funding in the base salary for the department to absorb that, which is about $200,000. There will be a general fund obligation, which will have to pick up the difference.
Okay, but if the office is being cut $18 million, where's that money going to come from if there's a balance that needs to be paid? To either staff benefit or what goes along with those positions?
The $18 million, the department is working currently on a report that needs to be submitted to the mayor's office and our office, how they're going to identify this and what they're going to do about the salary gap. That is, we're treating that separately from this because we have identified funding for these positions.
Well, the concern I have is do we have the funds identified for the salaries and any indirect costs?
We have funds identified for direct salaries only and not for related costs.
Okay, so where's the indirect cost money coming from?
It would have to be a general fund obligation.
But he's being cut $18 million. So in other words, the charter mandates eight positions, the new city attorney comes in, he wants to bring in these eight people, which the charter permits him to do, and you're going to give him some money, but you're not going to give him sufficient funds to do what needs to be done for the eight positions. That's not fair to the city attorney-elect. How do we make that balance so he doesn't come in, hire people that the charter permits him to do, and not have the funds to pay for those in addition to $18 million cut to the department?
It's our hope that some vacancies will be freed up through normal attrition and retirements that may happen within the next three months.
Okay, but wait, 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 wait. This starts July 1st. This man becomes the city attorney July 1st. Three months down the road doesn't help him when he wants to start and become active in the office July 1st. Two or three months, two or three weeks doesn't help him. How do we give this man what the charter provides when he wants these eight positions? That's all he's asking for, is eight positions, which the charter mandates that the city attorney can have. So now he comes in with these eight people that he selects, which is his opportunity, his option, or maybe three months down the road, maybe we'll find all the funds that you need for the other expenses. That's not fair to him. How do we plug that? How do we make sure that he can do as other city attorneys have done? They come in and they select those eight people, and they run the office.
Right. Well, we are providing him with the position authorities as far as the funding. My office can work with the, with the department and the CIA the best that we can to identify any funding gaps.
That's like giving me a car and not putting any gas in the car. I have a nice car, but I can't drive it because there's no gas. That's what we're telling him. You got eight positions, but we're not going to have, we're not going to be assured of the funding. That's not acceptable.
Mr. Zine, you're over your time. If you would, please press your button again to speak for a second time so that we can continue on. I would appreciate it.
Can you pull aside and speak?
You're over. You're over your time now.
Do I have speakers on the queue?
Yes, there are two behind you, so press your button again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Zine, I agree, as someone who's going across the street, I have five positions that are vacant, are going to be vacant, that are ability to put people in those positions within the budget as well. I have a question that the, so the eight positions for three months is a million dollars?
No, the, the funding is full funding for a year. The $881,000 is full funding for one year.
It's full funding for a year. They have the, the authorities for the positions just for the three months. They would have to come back. Now, I know some of those people that are in the eight positions who were tenured are leaving. So would that be credited then to that, go back to the consumer fraud account?
Well, the department has utilized this funding source throughout the year as they have eligible costs that come up. So what this is doing, as I said, is it's freeing up general fund money. The department anticipates that this dollar amount...
Hold my time, please.
The value of, of consumer protection cases that can be charged will be up to $881,000 for the entire year. That's why we're asking for a full appropriation.
Okay. So my, my question is, so there's money that's been identified, non-general fund, in this consumer protection, that if in fact the individuals don't leave those positions, then there'll be general funds to pay for it? Because my concern is, this consumer fund, which I am not familiar with, that it had a million, did you know it had a million dollars in it? And that it's been used, it's used every year for a variety of reasons that, and I'm not sure, I mean, this may be something I'll look at across the street, is to how those funds are being used.
The, from my conversations with the department, this past year is the first time that they've actually tapped into the fund to pay for salary costs.
So what have they used them for before?
I'd have to defer to the department on that question.
Okay. I think that's a bigger question in the, in our Budget and Finance Committee, so we will be asking those questions, or you'll be asking them, and I'll be asking them as controller. But, so, I think, Dennis, what they're saying is they have the money for a year to fund these positions, and in that, and, but the, the authorities are just for three months with the hope that there'll be other vacant positions that will reimburse the fund. I mean, again, I would love to have a go in and support, you know, to take away from general fund appropriations, but there was a reason for that consumer fraud participant. So is it set up in this, in this category here that if, if vacant positions become available, those are the eight positions that are tenured, the funds for those will go back into the consumer fraud, the consumer protection fund? Because it's Consumer Protection Trust Fund and penalty to fund.
Correct. The, this off-funding budget source will, the current incumbents that are in these positions may possibly leave due vacancy or attrition. What this does, what this action does is it frees up general fund money, which would have otherwise been used to pay for these current incumbents.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, if an incumbent leaves, so, I know, again, one particular position is leave, they're leaving the city attorney's office and going to work for someone else. That will be X amount of dollars. Those dollars should be put back in to the consumer fraud protection fund, whatever it is, because now those monies have been freed up. There's not only the position, but now there's the dollars.
Right, right.
And is that what we're doing today? Yes.
You don't know, don't ask.
If not, we will add those instructions in to go into the fund.
Can I just jump in quick? Yes. In terms of our understanding as, as to the availability of these funds, our understanding is that when the trust fund was initiated, it was initiated as a result of a state statute. And the revenues that are received by the city attorney's office have accrued as a result of the current city attorney being very aggressive in pursuing consumer protection filings against insurance companies. So the revenues that we... So the revenues that have been received in the last couple of years is frankly unprecedented. The $800,000 that are being used to pay for the city attorney-elect's positions actually came in as receipts within the last several weeks. The consumer fraud unit within the city attorney's office are actually paid by general fund monies. With the receipts received as a result of the penalties that are imposed, this then frees up general fund money to be used for the city attorney-elect's positions. I understand... I understand, consequently, the receipts that are received will now be able to pay for the positions in the consumer fraud unit. If in fact the general fund monies to pay for these eight positions are not going to be necessary, given the fact that the city attorney is coming in with an 18 million dollar deficit, certainly whatever additional, whatever additional general fund monies are available will go toward reducing the 18 million dollar deficit.
Ms. Gruel, you have to...
I know, no, Mrs., but I asked for my time to be held and it wasn't, so if you could give me a little leeway.
Yeah, I'm, you're over now, so...
No, no, I was, it was, I was about 30 to 45 seconds that I asked to be held.
All right, well, if you could just go ahead and complete that and then press your button again, please.
Ms. Perry, I asked for my time to be held and it wasn't, so...
I was holding your time. You're over now, and I'll give you some additional time. I'll give you some additional time.
Just let me finish my comment, because Ms. Perry, I did ask for it to be held and it was not held during a time in which there was a conversation up there. So just let me, if you would, please, let me finish this and then I will press my button again. What we're saying is that there are funds put in a category in this fund, what we don't want, and the challenge is for the money to be moved in different places without any, any known here in the city council. That's the problem. We're in this situation because funds are moved around. We want transparency on this. So what we're saying today is it may be in fact that we decide we want to move that consumer fund money to go fund those particular positions. But at this point in time, we don't know enough about the situation to do that. And so I think what we're saying is, give them, give him those eight positions, those, those three months, the money is set aside in case no one leaves to come in, but if they leave, the money goes back into the consumer fraud protection unit category. Then they come to the council and say, we'd like to now use this for the general fund. It may be something we agreed to do, but that should be part of the action that we take today, is that the money goes back into that fund until decided otherwise.
And actually, just to clarify, the money is actually, the consumer protection money is actually going to be paid, used for salaries of consumer protection positions that have been paid on general funds, so that's how it frees up the general fund.
That's not, that's not what it said. And, and they've had money each, I think in previous years, has that been money used for salaries as well?
They have, this is, as June indicated, this is the most money they have received because of the verdict, so they haven't had as much money until...
But they've had some.
They've had some, but not enough to cover all the salaries that can now be covered with that consumer protection fund. Hence the freeing up of some general fund money.
I've never heard that in budget, I don't know if Mr. Smith has.
Mr. Alarcon, you are our next speaker.
Can you take this action without the city council?
The...
Yes or no? June?
Are you referring to the transfer money or the position authority? Because there's, there's a couple actions before you. One is...
You've got it right. It's before us.
Yes.
You can't do this without the city council. What bothers me about the posture of your presentation is that you assume that you can just take general fund money and stick it back into the city attorney's budget to expand a budget that we just cut. That's a bad assumption. And I for one am not going to vote for it. So let's be clear. The action before us is a report from the CAO and all the other parties, but the action that they need to be able to get to the eight positions that they recommended was an action that would take consumer protection dollars, replace general fund money that paid for staffing in the city attorney's office, and then pay, take the consumer, take the general fund money that, that paid for the consumer protection people and use that to hire eight additional positions. So let's be clear here. This is an effort to add eight positions to the city attorney's office, which the city council and mayor did not authorize. So it's a bad assumption. The better thing to do would be to take these positions, as I believe has been done in the past, out of salary savings. Now, you're saying, you just got cut 18 million dollars, and I'm saying that the only way I'm going to vote for this is if you replenish the consumer protection money 100% and not take additional position authorities, but, you know, substitute authorities are fine as long as they're paid for out of salary savings. And then it's your challenge over the course of the year to get the salary savings. I don't mind you using the consumer protection money temporarily, but that's to protect the consumers.
Right, but I understand what you're saying, and the, there is a direct correlation between the consumer protection money that could be used to pay for positions performing consumer protection activities. That is what it would be used, that hasn't been able to be, to be used earlier because the receipts just came in from, into the office. It didn't exist before.
Members, I'm going to vote against their proposal when it does come before us, because this is a way to add eight new positions to the city attorney's office that was never the intent. I understand the conflict with the charter, but you've got to figure it out a better way. There's a way to do that, and you guys were trying to take the easy way out by adding positions that essentially comes out of the general fund and then undermines the consumer protection fund, and that's wrong.
Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you. Obviously, there's a lot of confusion about what this fund is. The money that came in from consumer protection, is it earmarked or is it guideline in any way, or is it like the smoker money and you can use it any way you want?
According to the Los Angeles Administrative Code 5.430, expenditures from the fund shall be authorized by the city attorney or his authorized designee within established city practices. So it allows the city attorney flexibility on how they want to utilize these funds.
Now, does that, that's not like the police department asks a forfeiture fund where they get it, but they have to ask for our permission to spend it, but it's got to be held in the police department. So this is set up in a way that the city attorney decides how the money is spent, not the council? Is that what you're saying?
If I'm interpreting this correctly, it looks like the city attorney is the one that authorizes the funds. In the past, I don't know how the money has been utilized or if it's...
Well, you just said there wasn't that much money, so...
Councilmember, if I could interject here. The state law does set up this, it's this, the local law is, comes out of a state law that allows that, a number of years ago, if you recall, there were more private attorney generals doing consumer Prop 65 work. The law changed to basically limit the powers of plaintiffs' lawyers to do this work as a part of tort reform. So the work, the work went more to government, both the AG, DA, city attorneys, and they established this funding mechanism to be an ongoing funding mechanism of special expenses. We in our special litigation division in the last year, the one that's been doing the health insurance, the health care, the Frontier Hotel, have, have claimed more money than ever before. This is also the first time where we've actually recommended to your council that it can be used to cover consumer staff already in place, city employees. You actually have seen that before, although maybe you didn't focus on it. In the mid-year, for example, one of the things you approved was moving money from that consumer fund to our salary account for that purpose. One of the things that's being recommended in year-end is moving other money from that account to cover salaries. They have to be consumer salaries, they have to be salaries that are doing consumer protection work or Prop 65 environmental work. We have received, as I believe Ms. Cooper said, actually the month of June, over a million dollars. We have identified this as an off-budget source. It doesn't solve the 20 million dollar deficit, but it doesn't increase it to allow your council to be certain that there will be no general impact, fund impact by authorizing additional positions. Some of those positions, including mine, will be vacant, so the number which is currently roughly 1.3 will be down to 1. But the city attorney-elect requested new authorities anyway. Even though I'm leaving, he still requested a substitute authority, which the city has recommended. And I think they, I think the CLA and CAO put him on the short three-month schedule so that if people left, the substitute authority would go away and you'd be transferred back to the permanent authority, so you wouldn't have two people. So I believe, I believe when we were contacted by the CLA and CAO, we were asked if there was a, any funding source that could assist funding additional positions despite the fiscal challenges we're facing. We have identified this source in the past, we did just get money in this month. We believe there will be additional monies, depending on the priorities of the new city attorney and how much the new city attorney focuses in this area, there will certainly be additional monies. We do have cases in the pipeline. The money does come to you for approval, although if it's small monies under your current budgetary policy, like to pay an expense for a test of water and environmental testing, that comes under the level where it comes through you, because it's under, you know, 15,000 dollars. But certainly transferring this money from one salary account to another does come to you. You've done it once, we're recommending you do it again as part of year-end, and you would not be, I don't believe, transferring the money as part of this item. That would happen during the next, maybe the first FSR, or maybe you're proposing to transfer it now.
Proposing to, to put it, to have the city clerk put it on the agenda again?
Oh.
So it's included in, in the CAO report on this item as a recommendation?
So we, we don't believe we are actually, it will not be this entire amount because some people will leave. The consumer money has, to the extent we've had it in the last year, have brought it to your attention. We do intend, and I assure the city attorney-elect will do so as well, believe partially because it comes into one account, and if you want to spend it in another account, it has to come to the council for approval of that, that movement. And it's happened so far in the context of the financial status reports. And so, and it is a restricted source, it must be used for consumer and environmental, the two funds, but we have had sufficient resources dedicated to those, that we believe we are meeting the requirements of the restricted source. We have not been spending them without city approval because we actually have come back to you for this movement, and I expect the city attorney-elect will do so as well.
So the bottom line is, almost all the money is under the authority of the city attorney to spend it this way.
Yes.
There's a small portion that was not funded from whatever Mrs. Zine, in the additional costs that are going to be put, put under the, the general fund, a small amount.
If they're in.
If they're in. And the hope is that the reduction of those positions eventually will help balance it somewhere in this course of the year. And the question is, how do we make sure that it's kept off the general fund's back? And, and the way to do that would be either a loan for that additional portion, if we have to have the small portion, a loan, or just a guarantee that if you cannot fix this by mid-year FSR, that we'll just reduce some other positions somewhere and it's going to come out of salary savings sooner or later. Either the city attorney maintains his budget, or if he can't maintain his budget, then we'll have to take it out someplace else to repay it, to keep off the general fund.
But councilmember, I think that would be fine, I believe, you know, obviously I'm predicting the future. The small part that is not covered, if there's any part not covered, once my salaries take out of pot, I have no doubt will be, the fund will be replenished more than that by mid-year.
I think you're probably right. The problem is we can never make those kind of assumptions in the budget. So I think from our protection point of view is, we know that your salary right away will almost balance it.
Yes, sir.
Almost, but not all. So we'll just have to instruct the CAO in the mid-year FSR to make sure this is an item for discussion. We'll check the balances, see where it is, and if we have to make corrections, then we'll make a correction in the city attorney's salary account at that time.
Right.
And that's a guarantee that we have, that we can fix this problem, and I hope solve some of the issues that have been brought up about the confusion that's here. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Parks, you are next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that explanation kind of lays it out to where this thing will be somewhat cost-neutral within a month or so, because people will move out and those funds are still within the department. I would just like to make a technical amendment to this item, that the, instruct the CAO to move 30,000 dollars from the UB under the council meeting and security fund to the city attorney's budget, and this will cover some expense that addresses the security issues of the new city attorney.
Is there a second to that?
Second by, I heard a voice, didn't see, by Mr. Zine, thank you. All right. Hold that on the desk. Mr. Zine, I believe you're up next for the second time.
The charter, there's a conflict with the charter. The charter states, "The appointment of all persons serving the pleasure city attorney," which are the eight positions we're talking about, "shall terminate when succeeding city attorney is sworn in unless reappointed by the succeeding city attorney." There's a direct conflict with what's happening with the charter. How do we correct that? He doesn't need to have, and I, there's no disrespect on the folks that have those eight positions, or now it's going to be seven positions. The fact is, the charter lays out that of 900 some attorneys and staff, the city attorney can select eight. When the city attorney leaves, those eight people, according to the charter, are supposed to leave unless he wants to bring them back. How are we going to conflict with the charter and make this work?
Councilmember, let me answer that question. I believe the charter says that the city attorney can have up to eight tenure-exempt positions. City attorney doesn't have to have any. The city, the charter goes on to say that if in fact there are some reason, there's a problem with getting the positions, the city attorney-elect actually has the, the new city attorney each time, has the power to actually bring people in and bump people out if necessary. We don't believe that, in addition, it has been the tradition, prior city attorneys as well, have sometimes had people that were tenure-exempt that became tenured, and that is allowable under the charter, and we believe it's allowable here. And the issue, we have certainly, the outgoing city attorney has been trying to communicate with the incoming, incoming city attorney team that we'll work with them to get the positions and resources they need to do whatever they want. And it may be more than eight they ultimately want, and that's going to come to y'all. But getting eight under the charter, whether they get more than eight is going to be y'all's call, about whether if they come in and say they really need 12, or 15, or 20 to really hit the ground running. But as far as the eight, we have worked with them and worked with the CLA and CAO to try to addition, to identify a funding source to ensure that they would have the opportunity to bring the eight positions. In addition, one thing that's important to note, while the charter does not require eight positions for the new city attorney-elect or any incoming city attorney, it allows them, there are no such specified positions that the, the person's personal secretary is tenure-exempt or not. The person's head of personnel is tenure-exempt or not. It's eight positions at the city attorney's choice, where the city attorney will put wherever the city attorney wants to do different things. Some of them may be managers, some of them may be special assistants, some of them may be secretarial administrative support. So it's, it's actually impossible for the outgoing city attorney, which would be true for Mr. Trutanich as well, to anticipate what the next one might want and keep eight of those vacant, because he, she doesn't know what the next one's going to bring in. They get eight, but which eight they are, you don't know, and each person has brought a different complement of people. Some lawyers, some non-lawyers, some investigators, some secretaries, and so you, there are no eight designated positions that are the tenure-exempt ones, unlike council staff, for example. There are just up to eight positions.
The question is, the people that are in those eight positions are in key positions in the city attorney's office. They're not out working some court, they're not out working some, a city attorney position in Van Nuys Court or San Pedro Court. Those eight positions are key positions. And I think if you look at the history of the city attorney's office and why it's in the charter, it's a key position, San Pedro. But they're key positions with very comfortable salaries. And I think if we identify those eight positions, we'll find that. I don't know who they are, no disrespect to the individuals, but this really happens, the city attorney, when these folks, he'll have two, or three, or four, working that he doesn't want in that particular position. Now, if he transfers them out to another opportunity, now there's a salary issue because they're not going to get their salary cut. So I think what we find is, this is a conflict with the charter, and I think that we need to clarify this in the future. The new city attorney, the next city attorney, where they can get eight folks, just like a chief of police comes in, he inherits the command staff. We come in as elected officials, the mayor goes in, the governor goes in, they bring in their staff. My interpretation is very clear, is eight positions in that city attorney's office, the city attorney can bring those eight positions in, and it just happens. And I think if we identify the positions, they are key positions in the office. That's the concern that this city attorney, the new city attorney has, that he doesn't want to duplicate the secretarial or the chief prosecutors or whatever the category that they have. That's the concern, that's why I think the conflict exists with the charter, and I support the fact that we're going to give these positions to the new city attorney. He comes in an office where he's 18 million dollar cut from the current budget, and he's trying to make it work, and then he's going to come here and beg for positions, beg for dollars to run the operation, and then we're going to nitpick everything along the way. At least give him the positions he needs so he can get off the ground and moving off the ground. So as I understand... So as I understand, the money's going to be there to hire these folks, so it's eight additional positions. With your departure, it's going to be seven. I don't know how many of those other folks have other positions, or are going to retire, whatever. So he's going to duplicate, he'll have at least, instead of eight, he'll have seven plus eight. He'll have seven plus, he'll have the seven, plus the eight he's going to bring in. Now, the seven that he inherits, where they're going to go, I don't know, that's up to him. But the fact is, he'll get these eight additional positions, and you found the funding to make those whole for a year?
Mr. Zine. Have I called you?
Wendy, that's correct.
Three months or a year?
Well, the substitute authority is for three months, so that we can evaluate the situation at that time, there may be sufficient vacancies.
What if they're not?
Mr. Zine?
Then we would consider them on substitute authority, and there's sufficient funding that's been identified.
I think this new city attorney is going to have a difficult time trying to run an office if he's not getting what he needs to receive in personnel to get the office running in a smooth operation. And if people come in for three months, and then they're going to get the boot, if we don't have the change, and he's getting $18 million cut, or it may be a larger cut, that's not fair to him.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Press your button again, please. Mr. Alarcon, you're our next speaker for the second time. Please feel free to press your button again.
You're leaving July 1st?
Yes, sir.
Why do you need eight positions? Why not seven?
The city attorney-elect requested it, sir, is my understanding?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. The city attorney-elect requested all eight, as substitute authorities.
Members, we know that Mr. Llewellyn's position is going to be vacant. Why are we requesting eight substitute authorities, when there's one right there? We should only be asking for seven.
We wanted to make sure there was authority on July 1. We don't know exactly, when this report was written, we did not know exactly if Mr. Llewellyn would be accepting another position, and when that will occur.
You just said he's leaving.
Which, which are you leaving on July 1?
I'm leaving on July 1. You can click that down.
With that, I would, I would
It has been in the newspaper.
I would ask to amend the report to seven, not eight. And this is going to be subject, that position alone will pay for five of the eight positions for three months.
Councilmember?
I just want to make sure.
You do the math.
We won't ask you publicly.
Yeah, I mean, the point here is that the general fund, the money reverts to the general fund, and it's interesting, the report says, thereby making money available. We got a $500 million shortfall, and all of a sudden, a million bucks is going to end that shortfall? No, that general fund money goes back to the general fund. It's not automatically the city attorney's, that's the problem I'm having here. That money should have been saved, first of all, the civil service authorities, and that game is just wrong. That is wrong. And I hope that the city controller, the new city controller, will go after how we resolve this conflict, so that this doesn't happen again, because this is just wrong. It's political gaming at its worst. And the fact of the matter is that, that the charter contemplated, when the voters voted for those eight positions, that a city attorney, an elected city attorney needed eight political people. And that's what it was used for. Recognizing that the bulk of the work is bureaucracy, functions that regardless who the city attorney is, they should be performed, but in a political office, you've got to have some political support. That's what the eight positions are. And the current city attorney eliminated the possibility, without this use of general funds that's not authorized, to comply with the city charter. And I think that's just wrong. And I hope it never happens again, and I hope Wendy helps us resolve that. But I believe we ought to change this to seven, just to be as honest as possible, because we know there's one position already, and if it doesn't happen, Mr. Llewellyn stays on, hey, come back. But right now, it's wrong to take any general fund money. I'm hopeful that the general fund money is replaced by salary savings of some kind. And also to take it out of the consumer fraud, you know, that's a fraud in and of itself, quite frankly. That's the worst, worst thing to do, it's just shucking and jiving the voters of Los Angeles. Now, I'm still going to vote against it out of principle, because this is exactly why the voters don't come out to vote. It's exactly why we have a lack of confidence in our city government.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Zine for the third time, yes?
For the final time. So I would, I would request that we move, and I would encourage my colleagues not to take this out on our city attorney-elect, since he had nothing to do with this, but to support the fact, and we'll amend it to seven positions, knowing that one individual in that high position is going to be leaving the office, that we, that'll give him the eight, seven plus the one vacancy right now will give him the eight positions, that we support that, so the new city attorney can get on with the business of protecting the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles, and I would encourage us to all vote for that. And hopefully, in the future, this will not reoccur, that we will follow the charter, and general manager will follow the charter, so we don't have this kind of problem in the future. That'd be my motion to move the city, the CAO, the CLA report with that modification, and also the amendment by Mr. Parks on the $30,000 for seven positions, with the condition that one is already vacant, which would give him a total of eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I believe we have the motion on the table by Mr. Parks, is that correct, Mr. Parks? And that was seconded by Mr. Zine?
We're just amending this particular item to add a financial $30,000 move from the U B.
So, Mr. Clerk, just for purposes of clarification, can we vote on this as amended by Mr. Parks' motion?
I do believe it's considered a friendly amendment.
All right, so we'll vote on the entire package. All right, if there are no further discussion, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item. Slow down. We just voted. I can't hear you, Mr. Alarcon.
What are we voting on?
Would you like to hear the amendment again, Mr. Alarcon?
I didn't want to vote, I wanted to vote differently.
You wanted to vote, no?
I did.
All right, let's
Madam President, what was voted on was a motion by Mr. Zine to approve the CAO recommendations contained in its June 19 report, with the exception to reduce it to seven positions, and with the additional instruction to have the CAO move $30,000 from the U B to the city attorney's budget.
Do you wish to make a motion to reconsider, Mr. Alarcon? I can't hear you.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Absolutely. All right, well, go ahead and make your motion for reconsideration, and then we'll have to vote again.
That is seven positions, with the understanding that there is one vacancy, which will give him a position, a total of eight.
In the class, to be, to be very clear, in the class of executive assistant city attorney, so we would be deleting from the substitute authority request, that one class of executive assistant city attorney, and the remaining seven would be still contained to the recommendation.
I don't want to get seven, he'll get eight, but one is already vacant, it will be
Correct, and it is that particular classification.
I believe Mr. Alarcon would like to correct the record to reflect his vote as a no vote, is that correct? And Mr. Kargnis, I'll call on you.
Question the city attorney. What is the, what is the method of correction if a council member says that the button wasn't working, or the vote took place too darn fast for me to push my button? That could be corrected two ways. No, but please clarify, what if it's corrected and five people did that, and it changes the outcome? What's the story here?
Are we talking about this incident, or something that happened in the past?
This is my point. My point is, a vote was taken, my intent was to push my button, for the people watching, the council members don't have to push anything when there's a vote, the default is, it will show up as a yes vote. But in order to vote otherwise, which is no or yes, we don't get to abstain in this house, what happens is, we have to take the action of pushing a button. That takes perhaps a half a second, a second, two seconds, or what have you, and in this particular case, I believe that we were not afforded enough time to take the action of pushing our button if we wanted to take a no vote. So, but that's my point, Mr. Smith, I want a clarification. If that happens, I want to know once and for all, if it changes the outcome, do we have a problem, or that in and of itself is enough reason to revote? That's my question, Mr. City Attorney.
If it does not change the outcome, it's not a problem, you could make a record that
And if it does change the outcome?
If it does change the outcome, your options are to either reconsider, or if there's a finding that there is a technical glitch of some sort, then there can be a revote. At least that's, that's what's happened in the past.
Okay, so in this case, we have a reconsideration that has been made. I thought Alarcon
Mr. Alarcon changed his vote through an administrative request, but if there is a motion on the floor to reconsider, we can vote on him.
Excuse me, Madam President, if the outcome does not, does not change by the change of the vote, then it's not necessary to reconsider.
But you can reconsider, it's not necessary. Big difference, you're lawyer, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to change my vote to a no vote.
All right, thank you very much. So please let the record reflect the change for Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Kargnis as no votes.
Which would make the vote 11 to 2.
That closes this item. On to the next item, please.
Item five was being held on the desk for an amended motion, which has now been circulated.
All right, item five is before us. Everyone should have a copy of that.
Madam President, that committee report was submitted without recommendation.
There are no speakers in the queue on this item, so if you would, please, Mr. Labonge, would you press your button, and Mr. Kargnis is after you.
Someone from the staff just explained briefly what this is. CLA?
C D D.
Sure, whatever, just real quick.
Yes, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. Labonge. Since we submitted without report from A R, or from the Economic Recovery and Reinvestment Committee, I would move, as amended, the report that passed out of H C E D. So this adds then, from new monies that were, we had a larger allocation, so just to be clear, this isn't taking from anybody. Mr. Reyes and his staff have worked very hard on a great program that will help us actually do some job training that gets us almost 10 times as much bang for the buck on some job training dollars, so I would move the amendment A to be incorporated, and I'd move the H C E D report. The only reason we didn't have a recommendation from the Economic Recovery Committee, actually, did we amend the report in ad hoc?
No, the amendment came here.
Okay, but we didn't have additional amendments in the ad hoc? Okay, so it's, so it's okay to move the H C E D one. Then I would move that with the 14A as a, or, let's make it 5A, as a friendly amendment.
Madam President, that satisfied my query.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge, our next speaker is Mr. Kargnis, followed by Ms. Gruel.
Mr. Kargnis, do you, Mr. Kargnis?
Mr. Kargnis, you're our next speaker.
I just wanted to clarify what Garcetti said.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel, you're our next speaker.
I just wanted to give the department, only because there was a recommendation in our committee on Friday to take the money out of a different pot versus what we're voting on, and just to explain the difference, and have you changed your position since then, or still recommend the other? I know we said, go back and y'all talk, and then come back, so.
Right. And in that meantime, we're in the process, oh, I'm sorry, I love the science, Assistant General Manager of C D D. In the meantime, we were in the process of submitting and transmitted that we actually received 507,000 additional dollars in our base formula. So through the talking, that we actually amended, and that's what the amendment reflects, is the expenditure of additional five, so we didn't have to take from any of the accounts.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. And my timer didn't even go at all, so I got extra time.
I know, time hasn't even moved, so you got back everything that you lost before, and then some. All right, there's no further speakers in the queue on that item, so, Mr. Clerk, if you would, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item before us?
Item seven called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to move those to Wednesday, because we've delayed, and I think we're getting ready to lose a poem, seven, eight, nine.
All right, so that'll, that's what, we don't need to take a vote on that, we'll just continue it, thank you. All right, next item.
Item 24 called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this item refers to a street sign dedication that we will be dedicating in San Pedro. We'll be creating the Father Art Bartlett Square. And just a little background on who Father Art Bartlett is, he was, he's really a local hero in San Pedro. In 1970, Father Art, merchant marine sailor and recovering alcoholic, co-founded the Beacon House Association of San Pedro as a residential recovery home for men. The mission was, and has been, to assist men who are seeking recovery from alcohol and drug addiction. Father Art's dream was to create a safe heaven where alcoholics and addicts would be provided food, shelter, and counseling. Most importantly, he wanted to be able to provide a place where recovering alcoholics and addicts would have time to build a foundation in the program of Alcoholics Anonymous, and to ultimately return to normal, useful lives. When its doors opened, Beacon House had 12 residents and a total budget of $135. There are now 120 residents, and the budget surpasses $1 million. And over the years, the Beacon House has served more than 4,800 men. And the men of Beacon House have become well-known in San Pedro as volunteers, partners in improving the community. Whenever San Pedro needs a job done, a street cleaned, an event staffed, we call the men of Beacon House, who always feel like it's a part of their recovery to give back to their community. So I think what Father Art actually envisioned of just finding a place for men to recover from addiction has been so much more, probably more than he ever envisioned. It's been a blessing to every man who's been able to go through that house, but it's really been a blessing for the town of San Pedro, even Wilmington. The men of Beacon House will go to Wilmington and help out wherever they can. So, and in the 1990s, Beacon House purchased a building on Beacon and 11th and named it the Bartlett Center, and the square that we will be voting on today, the Art Bartlett Square, will be located right outside this building. Father Art was Man of the Year by the Maritime Trades Department of Southern California, he was honorary mayor of San Pedro, and in 1985, he was the San Pedro Lions Club Citizen of the Year. I think this is a very fitting and appropriate tribute that we, in the city of Los Angeles, give to this man who has changed and saved so many lives. So I urge your support on this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. No further speakers in the queue. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 27 called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, again.
Colleagues, the resolution before us will show our support in the city of Los Angeles for President Obama's Supreme Court nomination, Sonia Sotomayor. If confirmed, Sotomayor would be the first Latina to serve on the Supreme Court, and one of two women serving. Her personal story serves as a model of will and determination. A daughter of Puerto Rican parents who was raised in the Bronx Public Housing Project, she's had an extraordinary journey from modest beginnings to achieving the American dream. Her extensive legal experience, coupled with her challenging personal experience, make her, I think, a uniquely qualified candidate for the Supreme Court Justice. She brings relevant, yet remarkably underrepresented perspective to the highest court in the land. This is a true testament of changing times in our country, and one that we should all be proud of. And President Obama said, "America has taken another important step towards realizing the ideal that is etched above its entrance, equal justice under the law." I think it would be great if the city of Los Angeles stood up and was counted today in endorsing President Obama's nomination, which signifies a grand historic landmark in endorsing President Obama's nomination, which signifies a grand historic landmark, not only for Latinos or women, but I think for all Americans. And I know my colleague, Jose Wezar, will say something. He actually knows her well. They communicate with each other. And it's a very exciting time, I think, for this country to have a woman of her experience and credentials serving us in this position.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Janice, for bringing this forward. I think this is wonderful that the city of Los Angeles would go on record supporting the nomination of a Supreme Court Justice that a president has just made for a jurist who really has shown that she knows the law, knows what the Constitution of the United States stands for. And if you think about it, someone mentioned that she has, she will bring more federal judicial experience as an entering justice than any Supreme Court Justice in 100 years. She was the only Supreme Court Justice sitting on the bench with experience as a trial judge, and has done a number of other, been in a number of other positions that she's going to be able to bring that to the court. But I think, as you mentioned, Janice, her life experience will shed light on that as well. You know, there's been a lot of debate as to whether her being a Latina and her perspective on life and the law, and what that would make for her as a Supreme Court Justice, as she's interpreting cases or making, deciding cases. But you know what? I think that's a great thing, because we know the demographics of this country is changing, and everyone's life experience adds to our decision-making, no matter what we do. And as a broader, as a perspective that we could have on the Supreme Court, the better law, I think, we will have for this country. So I think this is another great step for this country to take, to be more inclusive, to show that this country certainly is living up to its ideals. And, you know, as you mentioned, Janice, I got to know her for some time. I sit on the board of trustees at Princeton with her. And as a person, just a very delightful person, thoughtful, caring, inquisitive. And I think that overall, she brings to the table the things we would like to see in a Supreme Court Justice. I don't know if this is one, but down-to-earth, knows the law, and has an incredible life experience. So I think this is something that all Americans could be proud of, but in particular for both women and Latinos. So thank you, Janice, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Mr. Kardenas.
I want to thank Ms. Hahn for bringing this forward. I think it's important for us to live through the truth and to actually take actions that actually fall in line with what we claim to be as a country. And this country always talks about its diversity, and how important that is, and how valuable that is. If ever there's a place in this country where we should have and have to have diversity is in the Supreme Court of the United States of America. And Ms. Sotomayor is definitely a very qualified individual. It's up to the U.S. Senate to put her through the wringer and to make that determination and make that vote before she can be appointed. But I think it's important that all of us voice our opinion and factual opinions. I was very, actually disappointed, and I'll use soft words, disappointed when I heard some detractors, some elected officials around the country, very powerful elected officials, and others, that immediately said that she was unqualified, that she didn't have the talent to be able to be a U.S. Supreme Court. With all due respect, just one aspect of her abilities and her intellect is that she graduated at the top of her class at one of the most prestigious universities in the country. And for people to not do their research and actually look at that, maybe you want to pick on her for other reasons. You don't like the way she combs her hair, or you may not like a particular language of a particular case that she used, or what have you, then that's up to you, because that's your opinion. But for people to espouse any idea that this woman is unqualified, when they don't even bother to actually look into what is on the record when it comes to her proving her intellect and her ability to handle complicated cases, I think is just inappropriate. So what I encourage all Angelinos and anybody who actually cares about this issue, and we should all care about it, is why don't you do your own research? Why don't you find out who this woman really is? Why don't you find out what she's actually been doing, and what her cases are all about, and actually read the language that is public information about her, and then make your decision as to whether or not you would like her or not like her to be the U.S. Supreme Court Justice? Then voice your opinion. But to just go around saying things by just looking at her and then espousing certain things about her that aren't accurate, I think is inappropriate. This is a very, very important position, and I think she's going to serve this country well. And her service will actually reverberate back to the city of Los Angeles in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kardenas. There are no additional speakers in the queue. So if you would, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 28 called special for cards.
All right, great. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you're still here. I don't see Dr. Williams in the chamber. So we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley for Miriam Fogler and Donna Pierman.
Yeah, you've made us wait here, you keep us hostage here for, run the meeting over this, you know, talking for the veteran, which I love, but you know, you can do that on presentation day. I mean, you're wasting the taxpayers' time here. You know, this is just part of the reason why your fee waivers are the same as what you're doing here at the city council meeting. You are wasting our taxes, tax dollars. You're not helping us. And for this matter here, you just said, "Sotomayor, she's a Catholic. She's going to overrule against abortion. I don't know why you people don't see the light." You know, I don't understand why you people have to go on these tangents to talk about this thing when we need to be prudent talking about this.
Madam President, speaking of tangents, she's not talking about the special event motions.
I'll hold her time, Mr. City Attorney. Please hold her time. Mr. City Attorney, you have an admonition?
You already did it.
I don't know that we heard it, because she was still talking over it.
Speaker is not speaking to the special event motions.
All right. Ms. Fogler, if you could please stay on topic.
Well, then, how about the rest of you people being on topic with the city issues instead of being on the federal? I'm saying we have a problem here in spending and spending here at City Hall with these fee waivers, and you're still doing it, and you still want to get out of it by not being accountable to them at the July 1st.
Let me stop your time again. The issue before us is regarding the Supreme Court nomi, I'm sorry, special event motions. Please try and stay on topic. Run her clock again.
Okay. I'm going to run this over again. Special fee waivers at July 1st, you don't want to be held accountable, just like your pay, your pay raises. You know, you talk about salary savings. You're not doing anything here to save the taxpayers any money by not being accountable for these fee waivers starting July 1st. You were talking about that the other day, and the public needs to be aware of that, that you need to be held accountable for these fee waivers, and you can't get away with that. And it's unconstitutional what you're doing here right now, telling me that I can't tell you that you're not being held accountable for what you're doing, taking money away from the taxpayers and spending it however you like, and then continuing to tax the public and continuing to tax them, for continuing to tax them and tax them, and I don't know what you're trying to do, what you're doing here.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're out of time. Our next speaker is Donna Pierman, also in the San Fernando Valley.
Well, there we go again. My rights have been taken away, unlike fee waivers. Of course, you let them go. I wish my rights were as important to you as undocumented workers, unlike fee waivers, which you always have. You made sure my, that those voices were heard, but I can't, I can't come tomorrow. People depend on me to send out the judge's decision on social security. This is the second time. It's not right. I didn't feel, I didn't feel bad that your, I did feel bad that your input on fee waivers were taken away, though I thought you never saw a fee waiver you didn't like. Why should I care for you, as far as I'm concerned? I don't want these paid events for every culture involved, paid by the city, for parades and, yes, the Laker Parade, which I want to say, because I don't want to speak on 29 real fast, is paid by the city. City services are be paid, you want city services to be paid by the city, not private donation. It's not right. I didn't, we're having a crisis over here. We're talking about making city employees have to choose what they want to give up. It's not right. Along with, I said, the Laker Parade. Anyway, this is not right to be going along with these cookie, donut sprinklings and parades and closing off streets, by the way, they closed off the street over there in Westwood yesterday. And the people didn't know, they didn't tell people, so they had to walk far away to try to find a bus after waiting a half hour. These fee waivers are bad with these closed, closing streets, because a lot of times, they don't tell these people when these closer, streets are going to be closed. So people are waiting for buses. They don't put signs up. This is not right. I don't like these fee waivers. We can't afford them. Get rid of them. For once, say no. Fee waivers, fee waivers! So I'm going to say that one more time. So get rid of the fee waivers.
Thank you very much. All right. There are no speakers in the queue, so would you please open the roll, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 29 called special for cards.
All right. Special for cards on 29. First speaker is Miriam Fogler out in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, that was a great thing they won, but folks, you missed, you missed, you missed, communicated something here very important to the public. An open void was here. Who is paying for the buses, the MTA buses? Who is paying for the city, the police department and our fire department that was out there? By the way, the city picked up the tab, folks, out there. If you want to know, $1 million came in for probably, for the stadium, you know. I don't know where that money went. We need to have the numbers written out here. There is no accountability here. I wish the Daily News would do a report on this and bring out the truth as to what the, how much the expenditure was done by the city on the police and fire department doing the parade out there. I think this is an outrage and a slap in the face, and just another continuation of fee waivers, folks. It's just, they're continuing to spend as much as they want, and they want concessions from the unions? No way. No way. I think the unions should stand up and say, "No, that's enough, that's enough. We're not going to give you anymore." They gave 18.7 million bucks, paying $5 more for meds. I think it's an outrageous thing, you're asking too much from the city workers, and here you don't want to do nothing about collecting your monies that you're supposed to do for these fee waivers. I think it's an outrage, an illegal act on your part, not to collect the money that's due you. After all, the Lakers made a lot of money on this venture. I mean, these guys go there and they play, and they make millions of dollars. Why can't they pay for the parade? After all, it's for them. They're supposed to be doing this to provide a service to the public, entertainment, and then they're supposed to provide the celebrations and making sure that no cars are broken, no mall and pop shops broken.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Ms. Pierman, in Van Nuys.
Yeah. I see now that you, when the paper has said that we weren't going to pay for the Laker Parade, and I tried to tell people it's going to come along as a fee waiver, and now it's a special thing over here. I guess it looks like we're paying for the parade. You want to make well, very well sure that private donations don't have it. He said, "No, the city has to pay for it, whether we like it or not. If it's police, we have to pay for it. It can't be private donations." Well, it appeared to me that's what it looks like, what's going on here. And right now, we really couldn't afford to do this Laker Parade, and we're asking the city employees to go on furlough, and we're asking people to give concessions, like not take their raises, and we're paying for these things that are not important. I don't think this Laker Parade is very important, and they just close it off and make it inconvenient for anybody to go around. And of course, we lost the council meeting that day, too, because the city council didn't want to be there with the crowds. And I don't know if they went to the Laker Parade, or they just stayed home. So this is not right. We can't do this Laker Parade, and I don't have much more to say except for that. Sorry.
Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue at this time. So if we, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Oops.
Or we close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 35 called special for cards.
All right. Let's see. Again to the San Fernando Valley for Miriam Fogler and Donna Pierman.
Hello, yes.
Each one of you has one minute left to speak.
Well, is there a way I could split that 30 seconds and then 30 seconds on the 41? Well, I guess I could do both here. The layoffs are tied in with 41, folks, and I didn't get to speak on that last one. You know, this is not fair. I've been coming since Friday. I mean, last, actually, last Tuesday, I didn't get to speak on litigation. Friday, I didn't get to speak on litigation. And today, again, I didn't get to speak on layoffs. And this is not right, what you're doing. You're limiting me, how much time I can have, even if I miss two. It's not me missing it, it's you making me miss it, and then I don't get to speak, and that's not right. So I'm against these layoffs. I'm against the employees getting any concession, getting concessions from them, because you people are just continuing to spend, 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 and collect, you just collect, 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 and spend, 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 because that's all you like to do. And then the city's still going under. It doesn't matter how much they're going to give up, they're going to, you're still going to the same spot next year and five years from now. You're going to be in worse position. Every year, it's going to get worse, because you people just don't have any self-control.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Donna Pierman, who's also in the San Fernando Valley.
This is not right to do these layoffs. You're more concerned about making sure that eight new positions, or, excuse me, seven new positions over there for the city attorney. These are hard-working people. We can't afford any layoffs. I don't know who these people that are talking about layoffs, that we're going to go on, we're going to sue us on this, because this is not right. Isn't enough that they're doing furloughs? Isn't enough that we're closing places down? It's not right. Why can't you worry more about these positions as you can to worry about hotel workers, and you care about undocumented workers? Which, of course, some of those people are probably undocumented workers, so it's hard to say. So let's not talk about any layoffs for the city. Let's come up with something else. Why don't you take that and put it in committee and study it better and find out a more compassionate way? Let's get, we need to be compassionate to the ones who are compassionate, not cruel to people who are, for the ones you love. That's wrong to do that way. I guess my time is-
Thank you very much. No further cards for public speakers on this item, and no speakers in the queue. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would, please. Is there, we're going to continue this item.
Wait. No, 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 no. We can open the roll. We can open the roll. All right. Fine. Yeah, continue tomorrow.
All right. We're going to continue this item until tomorrow's council meeting, so we do not need to take a vote on that today.
Right. Next item.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All right. Next item.
Item 38 was called special by Councilmembers Alarcon and Parks.
All right. We do have a few cards on this item. On item 38, if you-
Wait, is there a hearing on this?
I think we've done the hearing. I know that we're in the midst of ERC meeting, that we actually recessed to come here, and that we're going to pick up shortly. Of course, short of our quorum of council members, as always, council members who are not on the ERC are welcome to join us, up to three additional members. But since we're going to be starting that up again in about five or 10 minutes, we can either take Action Day, or we can continue it one more day as well. I don't know how long it's going to take, but I think we will lose quorum bottom line in about five minutes. Let's continue until tomorrow slash next year. Next year.
Mr. Wezar, if you could speak into your mic.
I withdraw that. Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion, a request to continue this until tomorrow, then?
Without objection.
Without objection. We'll continue this item until tomorrow.
Next item.
Next item.
That would leave the closed session item.
We'll continue that as well until tomorrow.
All right. All right, I think there is a request also to continue the closed session item that is on the agenda today until tomorrow.
Without objection.
Without objection. Any other items?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posting and refer, motions are posted and referred.
That would clear the desk.
All right. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I invite all of you to a little bake sale, but I'm hosting this Thursday for a big cause in Los Angeles River. I'd like you to stop by our table at City Hall Farmer's Market. We're going to have, well, pretty discreet, must be lunchtime, chewy chocolate chips, brownie pops, moist banana nut bread, zucchini bread, peanut butter, cookies, raspberry oatmeal bars. All of this, essentially, it's a vegan bake sale, and the funds will help our River Rangers in keeping our river clean, picking up all the trash, the plastic bags, and it's a great cause from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the LA City Hall Farmer's Market. I invite you all.
Thank you very much. All right, any other announcements? Would you all please rise for adjourned motions? All right, Mr. Alacon.
Members, I ask that we adjourn in the name of Senator Herschel Rosenthal. And I'm sure that Councilmember Rosenthal would also like to join with me, were he here, because I believe he lived in his district. But Hirsch preceded me in the 20th Senate District, and what I can tell you is that he was a champion to improve the quality of health care for people throughout California. And he passed away due to complications from pneumonia last Friday at the age of 91. So he had a wonderful life, and I have to tell you a funny little story. He was not known for giving, much like me, he was not known for giving long speeches. One time, I went to a fundraiser he was having, and there must have been 200 people from the health care industry. He was the chair of the committee at the time, and they had this very elaborate event, and they asked him to come up and speak, and he went up there and he said, "Thank you," and he walked away. And so he was, he was not a man of many words. The most important thing about Hirsch, the most identifiable thing about Hirsch was that he was always with his wife Patricia. They would fly up to Sacramento, she worked side by side with him. She was part of his team, and it was really a beautiful thing to see the closeness that they worked together. They traveled together every week to Sacramento, they returned to Los Angeles every Thursday evening, and their family got together every Sunday. He was very focused on that. He was a leader in providing greater consumer protection, particularly better health care, and advanced the cause of alternative fuels, electric vehicles, and other environmental issues. Senator Rosenthal said, "Politics was his career, but his family was what he was most proud of." He will be truly missed. He was a very, very nice man, and I was honored to step into his seat after he left. The funeral services were held today at 11 o'clock at Hillside Memorial Park in Culver City.
All members on that? Mr. Lamangas, do you want to add something, Mr.?
Senator, he was a tremendous public servant, as Mr. Alacon spoke of. When I started off early in my career, I was also involved with park issues. I remember 1975 was with him in 19, in the spring, and we were in Wither Park, and we talked about issues, and the classic thing he always had in his back pocket was a postcard. And if you had an idea, he'd give you a self-addressed postcard that said, "I want to hear from you about what you believe in." And I always remember that as a younger person involved, that how he would, you know, get engaged right away and give you a vehicle. Because how many times people walk up to you with an idea and you say, "Okay, write me." He gave you a stamped postcard that says, "Communicate your wishes to me." He was, as Richard said, a tremendous person. His obituaries got praise from all over and the love of his wife, his wife for many years, Patricia, and had a beautiful little home from prime to heim. I went by on behalf of John off of Mulholland that sometimes had a couple of things that needed to be squared away on the boulevard, and he was so kind, so God bless his memory. We stand in his adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Lamangas. All right, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I regretfully announce that Elizabeth Libby Beatty, Executive Director of the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, passed away on Friday, June 12th, after a valiant battle with cancer. The National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors is a national association that represents the communications needs and interests of local governments and those who advise local governments around the country. Libby was an extraordinary woman, a loving mother and a great friend to NTOA, the organization. Under Libby's leadership, NTOA developed into an influential communications policy organization, representing hundreds of communities around the country. As the executive director, Libby was responsible for oversight and management of all aspects of NTOA's operations and coordination with its Board of Directors. Libby's tireless efforts at the FCC, NTIA, and before Congress gave communities a powerful voice in the debate over America's communications policy. We know her very well because we work closely with her on the digital inclusion issues and also on the digital conversion that just occurred this month throughout the country. To honor Libby, NTOA will be establishing an education fund for her children. Services have not yet been scheduled. Further details will be posted at www.natoa.org as they become available.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Anybody, Mr. Weisar?
Very much, Madam President. The first I have is more of an announcement. We just had a press conference this morning mentioning that we have a $75,000 reward for anybody who gives this information leading to the arrest and conviction of the persons responsible for the death of two individuals a week ago. And we're using all mediums to get the word out, if they could help our LAPD detectives and to get to the bottom of this. The individuals Felipe Villareal and Rafael Padilla were shot in the early morning of Monday, June 15th, in the street, First Street between Lorena and Indiana. We ask that if anybody has any information, please contact LAPD to get us the information. I grew up in these streets, my mother lived, lives a couple of blocks away, and we knew one of the individuals, he was a family member, a friend of the family, because he was just a happy individual. He's a musician that was, we think, a robbery, and I don't think anybody in the city of Los Angeles should fear walking the streets of Los Angeles for fear of being robbed. And our condolences go out to the families who are really, really, as you can imagine, feeling with a hard time right now getting through this. So I also have an adjourned motion. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Ignacio Munoz, who passed away on April 8th, 2008 at the age of 81. Ignacio Alvarez Munoz, with the fourth child of 11 born to Pedro and Theodora Munoz on February 1, 1928. He was raised in the Chavez Ravine area of Los Angeles and later moved to Lincoln Heights. At the age of 16, Ignacio was called to duty and served his country by joining the Army upon his return to complete his education at Lincoln High School. 1952, he met Trinidad, Flores, and six months later, they were married. The Munoz family resided in El Serena for 53 years. He worked as a machinist for Standard Tool &amp; Dye in Lincoln Heights for 30 years. However, his dream was to become a police officer. In 1975, his dream became a reality, and he became a reserve officer for the Los Angeles Police Department. In 1988, Ignacio retired and set off for a new career as a carpenter for his family. He built wooden closets, hutches, entertainment centers, and hope chests. Ignacio had a loving family of his own, beginning with his four daughters, Frances, Patsy, Gloria, Anna, all of whom are Cal State LA graduates, his twelve grandchildren and three great grandchildren. He is the brother of Al Munoz, a retired CRA employee, uncle to Corinne, Deliano of CLA's office, and Molly Munoz of the Controller's Office. His interment was held Saturday, April 18th, at Forest Lawn Hollywood. He will be greatly missed by his loved ones and all the city family.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we're still a nation at war, and so bring reminders always when we turn to the obituary pages of our newspaper, which highlights the lives of folks from the Southland who served and who have died in uniform. One such man was Army Reserve Major Jason George, 38 years old, of Tehachapi, who was killed in a bomb earlier this year. But a second person, who I wanted to highlight and ask that we adjourn in memory of is Navy Commander Dwayne Wolf, 54. He's from Los Osos, and he had joined the Navy many years ago as enlisted sailor, served for many years, and then retired from the Navy, came back as a reservist, and he drilled, like many of my shipmates do, once a month and throughout the year. And recently, he and his wife made the very difficult decision when the opportunity to deploy to Iraq came up, that he thought he had a lot that he could give back. And at the age of 53, I believe, or 54, he went and deployed in Iraq. He was a CB, which is like the Army Corps of Engineers for the Navy, the very storied Navy folks who go out and build bridges and reconstruct and help the engineering mission that's so critical to what's going on in Iraq and in any war effort. And it was in May that he went out. He was in charge of a large office at the Army Corps of Engineer. Many Navy folks are actually filling Army positions, and he was in charge of the office for the Anbar Province, the entire Anbar Province. And he went out on May 25th with a convoy to inspect a new wastewater treatment plant, and a roadside bomb killed him and three others. He was an amazing individual. He had kids that were in their 20s. When he made this decision, and he could have just retired and gotten the full benefits of being a Navy commander, he thought he had something to give back, and he went there to help a new generation of sailors and soldiers know how to fight and how to help rebuild Iraq. He was a deacon at his church in Los Osos, the Church of Christ there, a basketball coach, by all accounts, an incredible citizen sailor, and he will greatly be missed. May he rest in peace, and we thank him and his family for his service.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Julian Brooks McNeil passed away June 4th, born December 23rd, 1922, in Illinois. Served the Republican Party of Los Angeles County as Chief of Staff from 1999 to 2000, as Assistant Treasurer from 2000 to 2003. Served as a member of the 45th Assembly District Central Committee in the Los Feliz area of Los Angeles, been a member of his polling place board for several elections, also active in the California Republican Women and Men's Club. During World War II, served in the United States Merchant Marine. After the war, had a long career with Getty Oil Company in Los Angeles, rising to Assistant Corporate Secretary, and also as Corporate Secretary for ESPN Sports TV Network. Very dependable, loyal to the GOP, trustworthy, very well respected. We deeply miss, preceded in death by his wife, Golda, survived by two daughters, other family members. Mr. McNeil, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. All right, that concludes our adjourned motions. Mr. Clerk, if you would take the roll, please.